We acknowledge that we are gathered today on the traditional lands of the Anishinaabe, the Haudenosaunee, the Leni Peewik and Atawandarin. We acknowledge all the treaties that are specific to the area. The two-row Wampum Belt Treaty of the Haudenosaunee Confederacy, silver covenant chain, the beaver hunting grounds of the Haudenosaunee, Nanfin Treaty of 1701, the Makiti Treaty of 1790, the London Township Treaty of 1796 and the Huron Tract Treaty of 1827 with the Anishinaabe and the dish with one spoon covenant Wampum of the Anishinaabe and the Haudenosaunee. This land continues to be the home to diverse Indigenous peoples, First Nations, Métis and Inuit, whom we recognize as contemporary stewards of the land and vital contributors to society. We hold all that is in the natural world in our highest esteem and give honor to the wonderment of all things within creation. We bring our minds together as one to share good words, thoughts, feelings, and sincerely send them out to each other and all parts of creation. We are grateful for the natural gifts in our world and encourage everyone to be faithful to the natural laws of creation. The three Indigenous nations that are neighbors to London are the Chipewas of the Thames First Nations, Oneida Nations of the Thames and the Muncie Delaware Nation who all continue to live as sovereign nations with individual and unique languages, cultures and customs. This land acknowledgement is the first step towards reconciliation. It is the work of all citizens to step forward decolonizing practices and bringing our awareness into action. We encourage everyone to be informed about the traditional lands, treaties, history and cultures of the Indigenous peoples local to our region.
Thank you very much, Councillor Fyke-Miller. There are no recognitions for which I have been made aware, but I will ask if there are any disclosures of peculiar interest. Councillor Hillier, please.
Yes, on 8.1 Deferred Matters List Number 1, my family does operations in the park.
I'm sorry, and which committee? You just spoke a little quickly. I didn't hear it all.
Oh, sorry. Community Protective Services, 8.1. And that would be the Deferred Matters List Number 1.
Thank you very much. Councillor Turner?
I thank you, your worship, with respect to agenda item 8.2, the 11th Report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee. On item number 7 or 4.1, the London Community Recovery Network recovery funding business cases, item D pertains to the one in public library. My wife is an employee of London Public Library, so I declare peculiar interest.
Thank you very much. Any other declarations, colleagues? I see. Councillor Hamer, you snuck in there. Please.
Thank you. On the 11th report of SPBC, number 6, item 3.1, the report on short-term accommodations, municipal accommodation tax, I declare peculiar interest on that as I have rented my property on Airbnb in the past and I'm likely to do so again in the future.
Thank you. So noted. I appreciate that. Any other declarations? Councillor Hamer, I've promised never to overlook you again. Ever. With that then, colleagues, I will share with you that there are no confidential matters to be considered in public. So we are now going to move into closed session. Before I look for a mover and second, or I will call in the clerk to advise the public why we're going into closed session.
Thank you, your worship. The matters to be dealt with in closed session are seven matters that are outlined in the public council agenda. There is an item related to identifiable individuals and the awarding of the 2022 Queen Elizabeth Scholarships. There are five matters related to the proposed or pending acquisition of land, along with solicitor client privileged and related advice, and a matter related to labor relations and employee negotiations.
Thank you very much. And for that, then I'll look for a mover to go into closed session. I see. Councillor Lehman, second by Councillor Hamu. With that, we will call the question. And I'll look to the clerk.
Councillor Van Holes, Councillor Cassidy. Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0.
Pay attention to that particular piece. As we, for the benefit of the public, we will be reporting out of confidential session and then carry on with the balance of our agenda once that is complete. So with that, the live stream will be turned off and just ensuring the gallery is clear. All of the gallery.
Thank you.
I'll ask the clerk to confirm quorum.
Your worship, you do have quorum.
Thank you, and now as we've returned to public session, we'd like to welcome the public back to our August 2 meeting. And at this stage, I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting held in July 5, 2022. Is there a mover, please? I see Counselor Hillier seconded by Counselor Fife Miller. Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? I see none. We will call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
Thank you very much. I'll turn your attention to item six on the agenda, which relates to communications and petitions. And as colleagues will see, we have several communications and petitions. And what we're going to be doing is ask that, as is our way, that they be moved to the appropriate items in the committee reports. What I will look for is a motion to do so. Counselor Hopkins, seconded by Counselor Helmer. Thank you very much. We will call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
There are no motions to which notice is given. But colleagues, I'd like to apologize. I've been noting the count here. And as is our custom at the beginning of meetings, I typically advise who is not present for this particular meeting. I'll call the clerk just to advise counsel, just who that is, just as a matter of confirmation. And again, it is our practice. If you would, please, clerk.
Counselor Van Meerebruggen is currently in attendance.
Thank you very much. So with that. So with that, let's turn to the Ninth Report of Community and Protective Services. I'll call Counselor Cassidy, please.
Thank you, your worship. From the Ninth Report, Counselor Van Holst has asked that we pull items 4.3, 4.4, and 4.5 from the committee report. And Counselor Hillier has asked us to pull 8.1, which is the deferred matters list, so that we can vote on item one separately because he has a conflict.
So noted. Does anyone else wish to have anything to which a vote would be required separately? I see none. Counselor Cassidy.
All right, so I will put the remainder of the report on the floor, other than those items that were pulled. I will just note, we had a few delegations during that meeting. There were specific ones, especially about the fireworks bylaw. And as counsel knows, that there is an ongoing review, and staff are committed to coming back in early 2023 with some recommendations to the counsel of the day after early 2023.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions with respect to all of the items, with the exception of 4, 3, 4, 5, and 5.1? Counselor Turner.
Thank you, worship. Just with respect to 2.4 and 2.7. First, I just wanted to make some comments on the renaming of the Boston Community Center. I didn't speak to this in June when it came forward, but I hope that perhaps, and I recognize this ends up being an opportunity to find new funds for municipal programs. But these are municipal assets that we're putting corporate naming on. And I think we should have a little bit of concern and pause when those things occur. I'm training carefully because in the title of this item, the library is wrapped up in this, but the report does talk about a very specific, separate policy associated with the library. So anyway, I wanted to raise that, and I hope as we go forward in the future, we're not branding all municipal assets with corporate sponsors. I think it looks a little crass at times. I can recognize where we have public-private partnerships, where there's significant investment by our private partners. And those might be an expectation that there is some branding associated with that. That's not the case here. And so, anyway, wanted to say that here. On number 2.7, just perhaps, as for you, your worship, a question on the head lease program. Why are we choosing to renew the pilot program and rather than move towards kind of core and sustained funding? It looks like the program's been a success. It sounds like the intent is to try and look for more data. But if we had the opportunity, and it has been successful, why not just move towards making this either expanded or just permanent?
Well, then let's go to staff with that question. I think we'll be looking at Mr. Dickens, if we could, please.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. As the report indicates, there were some successes in the program, in the pilot, as it relates to those that were able to achieve some permanent housing on their own at the conclusion of the pilot program. The reason we're looking to identify this as a continuation of the pilot is to model what a community-led response would look like, noting that some organizations currently operate some head lease programs. The other component of this is to identify what a true cost would be through the administration of a third party, so that we can determine what ongoing, permanent, stable, core funding would look like, and understanding what the scale and scope we're capable of achieving when it's delivered through a third-party organization.
Counselor.
Thank you. And follow-up through you, your worship. I appreciate the answer there. So what metrics are we looking for, then, that are going to indicate success, that are going to indicate that this might be a recommendation for core and stable funding through multi-year budget? And whether the municipality operates it, or whether we look for third parties?
Mr. Dickens.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. Appreciate that question. I'm actually joined by Mr. Cooper, who's been able to, through his team, help scope some of that initial pilot, and is, will be very instrumental in the scoping of the next steps of this with a community organization. Who can speak to that?
Mr. Craig Cooper, if you would, please.
Thank you, and through you, your worship. I appreciate the question from the counselor. I think a lot of what the counselor has asked is going to be further defined in our RFP or expression of interest. I think we have an understanding of the successes of the head lease program as administered by the city. What we want to see is what programs are currently operating in the community. We know of several of them, how they manage some of the administrative burden, some of the administrative challenges, rent up, look at average supplements, look at average income of Londoners, what type of support needs Londoners have, and how those programs are supporting them. I think a good number of outcomes will be defined from our conversations with those head lease program operators currently. That will inform our EOI.
Counselor Turner.
Just one final question. I'd imagine we have some sense of what the social cost in dollars might be between someone who's unhoused and someone who's housed. And perhaps in terms of direct municipal impact, it seems, just trying to recall, I don't have the report open right now in front of me. It seemed it was around the neighborhood of about $20,000 to support through the head lease program per person that ended up being housed in that year. I'm thinking that the social supports for those who are unhoused is fairly north of that. Are we seeing a good return from what we have in a program here? And is this showing the promise that we're reading into this report?
So do we have Mr. Cooper or Mr. Dickens on that, please? Mr. Cooper, you give it a go.
Thank you, and through you, your worship. I appreciate the question from the counselor. Yeah, I think that's part of the administrative burden we were talking about in that actual cost. It was very difficult to define that as a lot of our Housing Stability Services team who kind of managed this program were doing it off the side of their desk. And so, the $20,000 is definitely, when we look at rental costs, if there's some damages to a unit, any rental arrears, or any kind of gap that we had to have for individuals that might have moved out, as well as any expenses called whatever it takes funds to assist individuals to achieve housing stability. It was very difficult for us at this point to put a finger on that exact cost for the administration side, given it touched a number of my team's areas and was not available for the report.
Thank you. I know, Counselor Turner, you said that was your last question. Do you have any other?
That's it. Thank you. I'm doing my work.
So you meant it. Very good. Thank you very much. Counselor Van Holst, please.
Thank you, worship. So my comment about this is an encouraging one. I think it's great that we set up a pilot, we learned some things, and then we're able to pass this off onto the community to see how well they're going to be able to perform. And I think these kinds of programs will provide some learning to other municipalities as well. Because, again, as we're hoping to house people, we also want to deal with programs and show that there are programs that could be implemented by other communities as well, communities that might be sending their challenged individuals to London, which we see happens commonly.
Thank you. Sorry?
So that's fine. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, colleagues? I see none. This has been put forward by Counselor Cassidy. So with that, we will call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
Thanks very much. Back to Counselor Cassidy, please.
Thank you, your worship. I'll put item four point three from the committee report, which is number eleven on the council agenda. It was a submission from Counselor Van Holst, as well as some community members. We also heard a delegation from a member of the community. It was a request to provide drinking water for dogs at the Pottersburg Dog Park. The committee recommendation is that civic administration be directed to report back in advance of the 2024 to 2027 multi-year budget process with respect to extending water services to parks, including dog parks in the city of London. So there was quite a bit of discussion at committee about this. There are five dog parks in the city altogether. This would have this proposal from Counselor Van Holst and the community would have only added water to one of the dog parks. And Counselor Helmer made also the point about having water available for humans in the non-dog parks in the city. So that's what led to the committee recommendation. And it was your Van Holst that actually pulled this item, your worship.
And you wish to vote on this separately, Counselor Van Holst?
Yes, your worship. I've got some comments, and I might like to make a change in how we proceed. So my comments and they'll mirror mostly what Counselor Cassidy has said as as chair of the committee. The the community was interested in the in water for this this one dog park. And then, of course, we brought up what about the other dog parks? And then we thought about water for humans as well in the in those parks, and then humans in in the other parks as well. And so now what's coming forward instead of the the water for the dog park is a report back on on all these many parks we have, over 500. And what I see happening, of course, is that in the end, after the support, there will be a delegation where the the members from Pottersburg will ask us for water from the dark park. So almost like the the old song, there's a hole in the bucket. Dear Liza, dear Liza. I I see this just coming back around to to the same request again. And what I prefer to do is is for us to simply follow this request from the community and save staff a a great deal of work, unless counselors are are really set on finding that out. But I think dealing with this as as a one-off is is fine. And we have, I believe, $1.3 million in the Community Investment Reserve Fund. There is an estimated cost of about $20,000 for this. So I might say it's a drop in the bucket, dear counsel, dear counsel. I so I would like to. I I hope that we can just do this, do this thing and and have it have it done without so much extension. And if if other other residents want to come forth for the other dark parks, perhaps there'll be an opportunity to do those, too. But I see us be able to accomplish something valuable here and improve the life of the the individuals that have dogs there, and of course, better for a dog's life, too. And the last couple of years, we've all lived a dog's life. So I think these small improvements make a big make a big difference to the community members. And so.
Thirty seconds, counselor.
Thanks. And in that last thirty seconds, your worship, I would put on the floor, looking for a seconder. My original motion that staff be directed to install a water supply for dogs in the Pottersburg Dog Park with funding supplied from the Community Investment Reserve Fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a seconder? Counselor, I see no seconder. I'll now take this back to Counselor Cassidy, please.
Okay, so your worship, I'll put the original recommendation from the committee back on the floor.
Anyone else wish to have a comment or a question? Counselor Lewis, go.
Thank you, worship. I'll be brief. I appreciate the counselor's Counselor Van Holst's intent. Certainly, the Pottersburg Dog Park is well, well-used in the East End. And I think that, looking into all of the dog parks, and indeed, to Counselor Helmer's point, all of the human parks, too, having water supply is not a bad idea at all. But I think we need to approach this in a comprehensive plan. This is something that perhaps individuals might want to submit through a neighborhood decision-making as well. That would be the appropriate place, in my mind, for an individual neighborhood to come forward with a proposal like this. For us to start picking and choosing from the reserve fund for just one park, I I do have a serious concern with, which is why I was not willing to second the motion. But certainly, if we can bring a plan forward, I'd be supportive of seeing this kind of investment made in all of our parks, both those for dogs and for people.
So with that, I see no other speakers on the list. We'll call the question.
Closing the vote. Motion carries twelve to two.
Counselor.
Here, worship. So item four point four was a bit of a two-for-one. There were two communications received from Counselor Van Holst. The first was with regard to temporary transitional housing units with some examples in his submissions, such as Conestoga huts and and mobile shelters. The second communication was about allowing camping to occur within the city for people. And I believe not just people experiencing housing or homelessness, but but many people. And so the committee chose to receive both of those communications, and that's what's on the council agenda tonight.
Thanks very much. Comments or questions? Counselor Van Holst.
Thank you, your worship. So what we learned at the meeting was that our staff didn't have the human resources to lead additional initiatives, but they did say they were willing to approach the community for expressions of interest. And because this is a more formal process, and it opens the field to ideas other than those being demanded by just the frontline groups, I I would like to move another motion that we follow along with the staff's suggestion there. And the the motion I wanted to put down on the floor then was staff be directed to issue or request for expressions of interest for the provision of supportive temporary and transitional shelter, transitional shelter for those experiencing homelessness. I would, in my opening comments, to like to mention that there is one group that has already putting together a plan. So I know of of one. And it's they already have a team to build. I guess these are somewhat modified Conestoga huts. And they've got also a team of 10 people that are skilled and willing to support the individuals there, at least one of whom would stay in a similar shelter and be there 24/7. And they they are also preparing a way to to screen and decide which individuals would fit best in in the in the project and are looking to partner with other other partners, I should say, other locations in the city where the amenities that staff had described would be necessary are located. So these are something different than what we would get from the the discussions that staff are going out to with right now to particular frontline groups. And I think this will be quite valuable because we obviously can't deal with this situation ourselves as a council. We need help from the community, and there may be other great ideas out there. And I'm following up with what staff had suggested they would be willing and but most certainly able to do, which is put out that that request for expressions of interest. So I'd I'd like to put that on the floor, and I hope that that would receive some support from council.
Thanks very much. You have a second for that, Counselor Van Holst?
I'm looking for a seconder. I hope I would find one.
Yeah, I just asked that question. We're fine. I'm asking that question. Do you have a seconder? Counselor Van Holst, I do not see one. So with that, I'm going to turn that back to Counselor Cassidy, please.
Thank you, worship. So on the council agenda tonight is the committee recommendation to receive Counselor Van Holst's communications.
Thanks very much. Any other discussions? I see none. We will call the question.
Closing the vote. Motion carries fourteen to zero.
Thank you, worship. The final or the next item that has been pulled is item four point five, and it was a submission from Counselor Van Holst regarding the Neighborhood Decision-Making Program. Counselor Van Holst's submission recommended or asked that we consider raising the annual budget from 250,000 to 1.4 million and split the that money up in 14 areas coinciding with the wards, as opposed to the current system where it's five different regions in the city. The cat, the committee is also recommending that council receive Counselor Van Holst's communication. I do believe that Counselor Van Holst may have another motion to propose, and I believe he has a seconder for this motion as well.
Well, let's ask him. Counselor Van Holst, do you have something to contribute to the that was not discussed at committee?
Yes, your worship. And let me also first thank the committee for their receptivity. This this motion now, and I it was distributed to council. Unfortunately, because of the holiday, it didn't make it onto the added agenda. But during the discussions, there seemed to be support in general for expanding the neighborhood decision-making and some also some indications about how much there would be an appetite for and what kind of funding source would be there. So in speaking with Counselor Helmer, he said he'd been willing to second a motion that staff be directed to include a business case that will double the tax levy funding for neighborhood decision-making in the 2023 annual budget update. And of course, the purpose of that is that the the incoming council will will have that there at one of their early meetings to see how they'd like to move forward with that very successful program.
Well, let's see if you have a second or counselor. Any seconder for this? And I'll look to either Counselor Helmer or anyone else that wishes to second. Counselor Helmer, you're seconding this. Thank you. Comments, questions, colleagues? I see Counselor Turner first, Counselor Helmer second, please. Counselor Turner, please.
I'll, if Counselor Helmer wishes to go first, he seconded the motion, so happy to let him proceed.
No, I'm the chair. It's good. Go ahead, Counselor Turner.
Enough, your worship. My my only concern is kind of the opportunity cost. I think, well, a couple of things. So if it's divvied by ward in this in the way that the original motion had suggested, that there's some challenges with that as well. It depends on on how it's administered. I guess most of the devil's in the details with it. The the second was with the with the Community Grants Program. We we saw some changes to that, and I had at that point had discussed that the opportunities might present themselves in the in the subsequent upcoming multi-year budget to augment the Community Grants Program. And I I see that as probably doing more good than the the neighborhood decision-making project process. I think the Neighborhood Decision-Making Program is a is a great program. I'm not sure if it's if it delivers as as much punch, I guess, as the Community Grants Program, because the Community Grants Program does a lot of work in the spaces where the municipality can't or doesn't. Whereas the Neighborhood Decision-Making Program allows for for great involvement and and proposals that come from the community. And I think they're they're also wonderful, too. I think if both of them were to see more money, then we wouldn't be in in bad shape at all. But if if it ends up being at an opportunity, the cost of not seeing the Community Grants Program funding augmented, then I might be concerned. And often, what happens with with these these budget things that we see in in business cases is kind of the first in the door ends up getting a bit more light than than what might come in later. And that's been my experience so far. And so that's why I'm a little bit more hesitant to kind of fully support it, but certainly happy to listen to my colleagues and see what comes forth.
Well, we will see that. Counselor Helmer, please go ahead.
Thank you. Happy to second this different approach from the counselor. And also did indicate at the committee meeting that in terms of the magnitude of that increase, I think, a more modest increase than what he was initially talking about. Initially, he was talking about taking it to 1.4 million a year. I think taking it to $500,000 a year instead of 250 is much more reasonable. I do think the program has been successful and probably would be even more successful, slightly more money. So I'm happy to support that in terms of the magnitude. And this is not saying that it's going to go ahead, but really that we're going to have the information we need to make a decision about whether it should go ahead. Perhaps it should be at a lower level, somewhere between where it's at now and 500,000, for example. The second thing I I appreciate about the changes, Counselor Van Holst had initially suggested, you know, changing the circle's policy and figuring out a way to finance it, which I did not think was a very wise idea. And and now it's just being proposed to come from the tax levy, which I think if it's going to be a permanent ongoing program, that's the appropriate way to to finance it. And so I like that change as well. So I think supporting a business case as long as, and this is a question, I think, through the mayor to staff. I know we're kind of up against it in terms of the timing for business cases to be developed. This one, I think, is relatively simple. I am a little concerned that we might not have enough time. So I wanted to ask through the mayor to city staff, do you have enough time to prepare a business case that can come in front of council for this budget update cycle?
I think that's a fair question. Let's take that back to staff. Ms. Barbone, please go ahead.
Through your worship, what I could add is that the timelines to develop business cases are due at the end of next month. So there's a very, there's only a period of a couple of weeks for Ms. Smith's team to pull something together. I would also note that as part of the Q3 internal audit plan is that neighborhood decision-making is also part of the review that will be taken place by M and P through council's approved internal audit plan. So we won't have that information available until probably the very end of the year. So that would not inform, be able to inform a business case that Ms. Smith would put together.
Counselor Helmer.
Okay, that's helpful. So I'm willing to support directing the business case. I do think, you know, everything else being equal, having the information from the internal audit would be great. But, you know, that might be a process of expanding the program over time. You know, we're not talking about taking it to 14 wards, right? We're leaving everything else the same, just increasing the amount of money. So it's being proposed here, and I think that's the first step that I'm willing to support at this point.
Thank you. I have Counselor Van Holst back on deck.
Thank you, worship. So I hope council will support this. Really, it's just a it's just a business case, but not necessarily going to go through. But I think there's been a lot of of talk about having the program expanded. My concern is that smaller neighborhoods will have an added opportunity to to get to get a a bonus for their their locale. So I know that sometimes it's difficult that for the the smaller neighborhoods to win because the the votes are in the larger communities. So by by adding more amounts, simply more projects will be passed. And I I think these are great things. And the same comment I made about the water in the in the dog park, these these small opportunities to make a difference are important to the residents. If we want a participatory government, this is one of the great ways that we here in London allow people to participate. They get something that that they thought up. They get to see it in their neighborhood. And and if it it happens a little bit every year, there's a little improvement. I think we feel good about our our community. So. we feel good about our, our community. So, so I, I hope for your support in this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilors.
Thank you, your worship. So much like the dog park water discussion we just had, I support where Counselor Van Holst is coming from. I think the neighborhood decision-making program is a wonderful program. I, I enjoy sharing information with the constituents. I enjoy seeing the community get engaged around it. There's been some improvements made in Ward Two certainly as a result, but I know there's been improvements made around the city. That said, I'm also mindful of the fact that at Community Protective Services a couple of years back, we had a discussion about how to change the neighborhood decision-making program that, and I'm glad that it's not in the motion tonight, but the fourteen wards was brought up then, and, and I wouldn't support it. Staff have been very clear about the additional administrative work that dividing up the city into more regions would take, taking away money from actual projects. But I'm also concerned about just arbitrarily picking a number and saying it's just a business case. Because a business case does require staff time and energy. And our staff, as they should, get paid for that time and energy. Never when we suggest a business case, is it just free, that it's just a report being written up. It's, it's time and energy that takes away our staff from other duties they have to perform. I would support a change in the neighborhood decision-making program coming forward, whether it's Counselor Van Holst or myself or whoever might be here in the next term of council, I hope, heading into the next multi-year budget cycle. They will look at the value of this program and consider increasing it. But I'm also very cognizant of what we heard from Ms. Barbone, that the M and P audit won't be there to inform a business case at this time. So I think this is premature. I support the, the intent absolutely, but I won't support putting time and energy into a business case at this time. I hope that whoever may be around this horseshoe next year will take the M and P information and use that to perhaps then provide some direction to civic administration. But I think this is just too soon.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, I, I have a, a couple of questions for staff, and then I'll make some comments. My question is, and I'm not sure if Ms. Smith is prepared to answer this, given I'm not sure how much notice she had it was coming. But what are the types of things that the business case would consider? It, it would consider projected impacts on participation by doubling the money? I, I'm just, I'm just wondering, is it just going to be a business case that says, here's what the doubling the program looks like? Is there going to be some sort of analysis about the projected impacts that we would see from an expansion of the program in this way?
Let's ask Ms. Smith.
Through your worship, thank you for the question. So we're currently undergoing a deep evaluation of the program. So we're reviewing the last number of years of the program. We're looking at it through an equity lens. So I have to connect with my staff to see how far along we are on the process. We're planning to come back in early 2023 with any changes and enhancements and recommendations on the program. So that is correct. It won't be in time to include any of that on the business case. But we do evaluate neighborhood decision-making yearly, and we do continually to enhance and improve a, approve upon the evaluation, especially looking at it through what neighborhoods are being funded, what neighborhoods aren't, receiving winning projects, and, and looking at it again through that fairness and equity lens. So we could incorporate some of the year-to-year evaluation findings into the business case. But as Ms. Barbone stated, not the auditors, any auditors' recommendations on the value for money audit, and not our deep evaluation that we will be using some, an external evaluator on this.
Deputy.
Yeah, so I'll make some comments. So this is a, this is a tricky one for me because I absolutely support expansion of the program. I think there's a number of ways to do that. And one of the ways that I'm, I, I wouldn't contemplate myself is, is making it per ward, I, which is in the motion, if, if the motion on the screen is indeed the ones we're passing. That's a little tricky, because I know that the system is set up very well for areas of the city. That's where the community input groups are designed. And unless we're doing a, a more robust overhaul of the program, which I'm not sure that this is going to drive, it seems like what we're setting ourselves up for is, is a tweak and then pending the results of the, of the internal audit information and perhaps new ideas that, that folks might bring to the next council, another tweak to the program leading into the, the multi-year budget. So I'm, I will, I'll be honest, I'm not usually very torn at council and, and don't know which way I want to vote on something. I usually have a good sense through the debate and discussion, but this one is one that is very tricky for me because I, I do believe in expanding this program. I think it provides incredible value to the community. I, I'm not sure that this is exactly the way to do so, and, and I would much rather do so with the input of those future members of council, whoever they may be, and the M and P audit report, and as well as the work that Ms. Smith said staff are doing, analyzing it from an equity perspective. So I, I'm interested in hearing colleagues' thoughts on this so that I can decide which way I want to vote. But right now, there's a, I see a couple of challenges with this. But that being said, I'm certainly one hundred percent committed to expanding this program in some way.
Thanks very much. Anyone we have not heard from? We have a motion that's been moved and seconded. Counselor Helmer, you've already spoken. Is there something you'd like to add that is specific to this?
Yeah, I just want to clarify something. Deputy Mayor Morgan referred to the changing the number of regions. And I just want to be clear, that's not what's being proposed in the motion that's actually on the floor right now. It's just to bring forward a business case about expanding the program. We had suggested taking it to five hundred thousand, so not, not creating more regions, just increasing the amount of money for.
Understood. Thanks very much. So with that, colleagues, no, no. Pardon me?
Your worship, then what's on the screen before us in eScribe is not what Counselor Helmer just said, hence the, where my comments came from.
That's helpful. Let's ask clerk.
Based on the discussion, I would ask the chair just to, to clarify exactly the wording. There's been a, a number of comments and the motion, the counselor is correct, or sorry, the deputy mayor is correct. That is not, my understanding of what is, should be in eScribe, so if we could get some clarity as to exactly what should be the motion on the floor.
So I think we all need to refresh and see what it looks like. Counselor Cassidy, this is your committee. What's your thought?
So, okay, from my understanding of what was in the email from Counselor Van Holst is that, sorry, let me pull it up, that the, that the staff be directed to include a business case that will double the tax levy funding for neighborhood decision-making in the 2023 annual budget update. So that was the email that was received on Friday and was sent to the clerk and to council and to myself and to the mayor from Counselor Van Holst. So I believe that is the motion that should be on the floor. And it's moved by Counselor Van Holst and seconded by Counselor Helmer.
I'll just come back to the clerk and verify that that's what you've just said is what is.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, that was received, that was circulated. And if that is what is intended to be on the floor, we'll just make sure that that is correct in eScribe before the vote is called.
Is there any confusion then from colleagues about the motion put forward by Counselor Van Holst, seconded by Counselor Helmer? Any confusion at all? Just have to nod your head? I don't look for, I don't need an explanation. Just nod your head if you have a confusion. Counselor Hopkins, is there confusion?
There is confusion, and I just want to make sure I understand what the motion on the floor is. And what I have in front of me is that we are receiving it and that the staff be directed to include 2023 annual budget deliberations, a business case for expanding the neighborhood decision-making program in the amount of up to five hundred thousand, which is different to what I heard.
Counselor Cassidy, is that what you said? No.
That is not what I said. That is what is in eScribe right now, but that is not the motion that has been put forward.
I think, colleagues, that's where the confusion is, is that there's a little discrepancy between, we're close, but I think we want to be precise on this as well. And that's where Counselor Hopkins was going. So thank you, Counselor, for that intervention.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, as chair, what are you, Counselor Van Holst, put your hand down for a second. I see you there. Just hold on a second here. Please go ahead.
The clerk has the exact wording, and they should be able to just put, cut and paste that and put that in eScribe.
Okay, just, so I'm going to hold off on all other comments and give the clerk a chance to breathe to put that in, please. So just bear with us, colleagues.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask Ms. Westlake Power just to read out for the benefit of staff what is currently loaded in eScribe?
I'm going to take it back to the chair again, please.
To me, your worship?
Sure.
Okay. I will read what the motion should be. That staff be directed to include a business case that will double the tax levy funding for neighborhood decision-making in the 2023 annual budget update.
That sounds very clear, but let me just circle back to Counselor Van Holst and, and Counselor Helmer, if that's what you thought you were putting forward. Counselor Van Holst, that's a yes or a no, please?
Yes, your worship. That is the motion that I sent to the clerks and council.
Counselor Helmer? Okay, so we got two yeses there and the chair. That's not the worst. All right. So we'll go back to the clerk and is there any confusion now about what it is we're voting on?
No, no, your worship. I believe that's loaded. For any counselors that cannot view it, just refresh eScribe.
And who has more fun than us? So with that, we will give you a moment to refresh your eScribe. And with that, clerk, are we ready? Let's call the question.
Closing the vote. Motion carries eight to six.
Thanks very much. Counselor Cassidy?
Thank you, your worship. So the final item from the committee is the deferred matters list, and Counselor Hillier has a conflict on item one of the deferred matters list and is asked to pull that so we can vote separately.
So is it your intention to vote just on the whole deferred matters list separately or to take that one particular item out of the deferred matters list, Chair?
What we've done at every committee cycle so far is pull that one item out. So I vote on item one separately and then the rest of the deferred matters list.
Well, if we've done it each other time, why don't we do it this time then? All right. So are we good with dealing with all but, as is typical, the item that's pulled, we normally save that to last just for fun. So all but item one. Bear with me a moment. So before we move on to that, the clerk who has all wisdom has just indicated that we need to vote on the motion that was just passed as amended. And for that, I'll need a mover and a second, please. Moved by Counselor Hamu, seconded by Counselor Cassidy. We will call the question.
Closing the vote. Motion carries eleven to three.
Thanks very much. Counselor Cassidy, we're going to take you now back to your deferred items, five point one. And I, I think you're moving all but item fi, item one of the deferred matters list. Any comments or questions? None. We will call the questions. This is an all except item one due to the conflict.
Closing the vote. Motion carries fourteen to zero.
Item one for the, from the deferred matters list is all that's left.
With that, any comments, questions? I see none. We will call the question. Conflict issue here. Thank you.
Closing the vote. Motion carries thirteen to zero with one recused.
That is my report, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Now, colleagues, I'll turn your attention to eight point two, eleventh report of SPPC. I'll call on the deputy mayor.
Yes, thank you, your worship. So the eleventh report of SPPC, the way I think we could divide this up, given the votes that occurred, is we could deal with items one, two, three, four, five, eight, and nine together, unless someone would like one of those pulled separately. There was a conflict on six, so we'll deal with that separately. And then seven, I think we can divide up in the same way that it was divided up at committee, given there were, there was a conflict as well as some divided votes. So, so with that, unless colleagues would like something pulled separately, I'd like to put one through five and eight and nine on the floor for now.
Thank you. Any comments or questions about those items that are under discussion now? I see none. We will call the question. Counselor Hopkins?
Yes, your worship. I, I have here that the eleventh report of SPPC committee be approved. I did not hear that from the chair, so just want a clarification again.
We are, we are approving items one through five, eight and nine.
That is correct, and we'll make that amendment. So it's one through five, eight and nine.
Always good to be precise. Thank you. The vote is on the table.
Counselor Hillier? Closing the vote. Motion carries fourteen to zero.
Deputy.
Next up at item six, which is three point one from the committee report, which is the municipal accommodation tax on short-term accommodations, a single-source procurement item on the floor for.
Thank you very much. Comments or questions? I see none. We will call the question.
Closing the vote. Motion carries thirteen to zero with one recused.
Okay, so within item seven, which is four point one, this is the London Community Recovery Network business cases. What I'd like to do is put A, which is receipt of the business cases, and then the following items from B, which are the business cases, business case one, two, and five. We voted on those separately at committee. Then we also with that voted on all of C together, which is. that, voted on all of C together, which is authorizing to execute any of the documents, direction to the city solicitor and mayor, others, and all the it-being-noted clauses. So basically, business cases one, two, and five, and the receipt and the correspondence related to it.
So Deputy Mayor, I thought I heard you say one, two, and five were voted on separately, but they were part of the included or the supported pieces?
They were all voted on together at the meeting? We're going to vote on the other pieces separately?
Does anyone wish on any of those items of A and then B, one, two, five, or C to be dealt with under separate voting? I see none. Any discussion then on any of those items of which we were voting? Seeing none, we will call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Item B, number three, business case number three, which is the Argyle BIA Currency Pilot Program.
Thank you. Comments or questions? I'm sorry, Counselor Van Holst, I was just looking away and I thought I saw your hand go down. Was it up? I didn't, go ahead, please.
Thank you, worship. And regarding this and all the others, I just wanted to point out at the committee, I thought Counselor Cassidy made quite a brilliant suggestion. We're looking at recovery from COVID, that there's perhaps $2.5 million or so left in, in the fund, and that might be a good use of that money, might be to deal with some of the increased homelessness that's been, been the result of COVID.
So can I stop you, Counselor Van Holst, for this purpose? I think we, having gone through these case reports, I believe what Counselor Cassidy was saying, that after this is done, there will be some residual monies. I think that's something that can be considered later. I think right now, respectfully to all council, we're dealing with item three, which business case. So the, what happens to the monies after this is allocated, I think, may be worthy of dialogue, but right now, we're dealing with Argyle BIA Currency Pilot Program. So do you have further comments?
Yes, your worship. I hadn't planned to say any more, other than I want to acknowledge that statement. I thought that was something to consider in the future. And of course, she said that that might be something for the future council, but I believe that was worth noting, and thank the councillor, and thank you, your worship.
Well, thank you, Counselor Van Holst. So with that, any other comments or questions on this item? Then we'll call the question.
Counselor Turner?
Just to clarify, this is not the one that I had the conflict on, the little bullet points in the eScribe. Don't...
No, I think you're fine on this one. This is the Argyle BIA Currency Pilot, Pilot Program, Counselor Turner.
Thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
Deputy Mayor?
Next, B, item four, which is the business case associated with the London Public Library Reading Garden access from Dundas Place on the floor.
And because of the library issue, I think a colleague declared a conflict there, so just bringing that to your attention. Any other comments or questions? I see none. We'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to zero with one recused.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
I believe we have B, item six, left, which is business case six, which is related to London tech talent growth.
Comments or questions, colleagues? I see none. We will call the question.
Motion carries fourteen to zero.
That should be it for the SPPC report.
Well, thanks very much. I appreciate that. Now, on the eleventh report of the Corporate Services Committee, I'll call on Counselor Lewis, please.
Thank you, worship. We had a relatively quick meeting, and we had one divided vote on the fourteen items that are before you, which was item fourteen, four point three, which is an application for issuance of proclamation. Not being made aware of any other items, I'll look to see if colleagues have anything else they wish to be pulled. Otherwise, I'll put items one through thirteen on the floor and deal with fourteen separately.
Sorry, there's just an emergency alert that came onto, onto phones. Does anyone wish any other items you dealt with separately of items one through thirteen? Any comments or questions with respect to any of those items, colleagues? I see none. Let's call the vote on those thirteen items, please. It's all items, colleagues, just for your benefit, with the exception of four point three, the issue of the proclamation regarding the 230th anniversary of the Black Loyalist Exodus. So the first thirteen items. Just bear with us as we prep for the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
Thank you, your worship. That just leaves item fourteen. I did not support the Sat Committee, so I'll look to the Vice Chair, Counselor Hamou, if she wants to put this on the floor.
Counselor Hamou?
Thank you. So I will put on the number fourteen, four point three, on the floor.
Thank you. Comments or questions, colleagues? I see Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, worship. We did have some discussion about the Sat Committee. I will be voting against this, and I just want to make it clear that my reason for voting against this is this proclamation actually has no attachment to the City of London. It was submitted from Halifax. It is, you know, and while it may be an important moment in Canadian history, you know, we just approved a number of other applications, each of which had direct connections to London, including Emancipation Month proclamation. But I continue to believe that our proclamations issued by the City of London should have some connection to a person, organization, or event happening within the city, and this one does not meet that criteria for me.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? I'll ask the Deputy Mayor to take the chair.
Yes, I'll go to the Mayor.
So colleagues, I supported this in committee, and some of the reasons that I shared with folks before, we're certainly getting to the point where we are fine tuning our proclamation policy. And I acknowledge what Counselor Lewis has said. I think we're getting better. I think we are trying to make it relevant. But in terms of relevance, and this was part of my argument for supporting this at the time, we put a tremendous amount of emphasis on the importance of the Black community in, in our city. And this, these were loyalists who fled due to persecution at the time. I declared that myself. I am a United Empire loyalist with the designation and such. I mentioned that in committee. But if there are times when we need to go outside the box a little bit, I think, and think of things that are of substance to our community and to our country, and don't forget, we were ones who made financial contributions support Province of Quebec, and that was universally supported, as I recall, because of concerns that we had of, of some of the judgments in the Government of Quebec that required us, I believe, to take a stand. And sometimes you take a stand that isn't always absolutely fitting within the protocol and the guidelines. I think this is one of those times. So I would, I'd be pleased to ask colleagues to consider this. While I absolutely recognize that there are some bumps and grinds with this, only insofar as they did not seek out someone at the local level to, to support it. So thank you for that, Chair.
Thank you. I'll return the chair to the Mayor.
Any other comments or questions? I see Counselor Turner. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, worship. I can recognize and appreciate the concerns that Counselor Lewis has with this. One of the things that I think we also need to take a peek at is when, when proclamations and requests come forward to us, is not just, does it have a direct tie to the City of London, but rather, do we have ties with other municipalities as well? In this proclamation request, it's seeking 230 municipalities to join in with, with this proclamation. So it's not London moving on its own. It's not a request from afar that comes to the City of London in isolation. I think it's important that municipalities across the country speak with a voice together, and the strength of that is, is augmented when each of us joins in. So this is a good opportunity for us to show that. I think it's reasonable, and I hope the rest of council supports the proclamation request as well.
Thank you, Counselor Turner. I would encourage the consideration for another council at another time to look at the proclamation when it does come up for review. And there may well be those kinds of consideration that colleagues want to consider. Counselor Cassidy?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you for your comments both at committee and today. I also did support this. And going further, from Counselor Turner's comments, this is also a significant event for the entire country. The fact that we did not have a local sponsor to sponsor this proclamation is something that could, that I think we need to be, give a little bit of leeway this time around. Do I believe that there are descendants of Empire Loyal, United Empire loyalists living in London at this time? I absolutely believe that there are descendants of these, these people living across the country. And, and I do agree with Counselor Turner in that, that show of solidarity with different communities across the country is extremely important, especially for this, especially given that it was on the same agenda, as well as our request to make a proclamation for Emancipation Day. So thank you.
Thank you. I see no other speakers. So with that, we will call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries twelve to two.
Thank you, Counselor Hamou. Thank you, Counselor Lewis. Anything else for you, sir?
That concludes the eleventh report of the Corporate Services Committee, your worship.
Thank you very much. Tenth report is Civic Works. Counselor Pelosi, please.
Thank you, your worship. I have not been given notice to pull any items from the Civic Works agenda.
Does anyone wish any of these items voted on separately? Counselor Cassidy, are you handing up, or did you just get a little relaxed? There you go. All right. Thank you. Does anyone wish to have any of these items voted on separately? I see none. Any comments or discussion? Why don't we start with the Chair?
Thank you, your worship. All votes were unanimous at committee. The highlights were two point five and two point one one, as those concern bylaw changes. As per two point eight, the infrastructure renewal, Ms. Share pointed out that we have a 10% standard built into our budgets, and typically, we only actually use three to four percent, and staff is monitoring inflationary costs, especially as things come with COVID. So staff is monitoring that, and that was the high-level overview.
Thanks very much. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Van Holst, go ahead, please.
Thank you, worship. I, I didn't pull it, but I wanted to make some comments about number thirteen or four point one, the Scam and Street connection. You received a number of emails or submissions for this item from the, the business residents nearby. This is an area that's long in need of some life cycle renewal. The, was revealed here that they've taken to repair the roads themselves, and so that's, that's one concern. Another big concern is that we have an extension of Scam and Road happening now, and a fairly long extension, given the space available. However, it's only servicing one property, and some of the residents were wishing we could divert that, the direction of that road somewhat to service the, the others. And that, that servicing could also work for waste, or I should say, stormwater. The stormwater situation is, is quite concerning in this area, too. I'll share with the members of council that weren't at the meeting. In one case, we have a business that without stormwater solution or connection, isn't able to begin work on recycling materials and diverting from landfill. We have another, another business that's taking on rainwater that, that's from the street. So we should be able to take the, our stormwater from the roads to a stormwater solution, but it's getting into their, their tailing ponds, which would require them to spend thousands of dollars to truck rainwater for treatment, potentially to as far as Sarnia. So
Sorry, Counselor, you're just breaking up in that last little moment there. Can you try that again? Counselor, can I, Counselor? Counselor, stop, please. What we're trying to do is just hear you, but it's been breaking up for the last 30 seconds. I won't take that. I won't, that will be part of the time, but can you, if you need to reset, but it looks like you're moving again and you were frozen. Do you want to go ahead, please?
Yes, your worship. I hope you'll be able to hear me a little better.
Much better, thanks.
Okay. Yes, so where I was at, certainly the stormwater in another section where there's water, rainwater from the road getting into a tailings pond, and that requires the member to spend thousands of dollars to truck this rainwater as far as Sarnia for, for treatment. So the, the situation needs to be dealt with, both the road and particularly the stormwater. So in our deliberations, it was determined we could come forward in the future with perhaps a change to the, the capital program to move this up, because it's not contemplated until 2020, 20, 2029, to look at a, a solution which might not... to look at a solution which might not manifest until 2035. And that's, I don't think that would be an acceptable solution for the neighbors. So we will be back again with hopefully a better idea and a way to move forward with this, and perhaps a win-win proposal in terms of the road and the extension. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, colleagues? I see none. So with that, we will call the question.
Counselor Van Hols, Counselor Morgan?
I'm sorry, my voting's not coming up, so I will vote yea.
Thank you.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 14 to 0.
Counselor Pelosi.
Thank you, your worship. That concludes the 10th meeting of the Civic Works Committee report.
Now for the Planning and Environment Committee. I'll call on Counselor Hopkins, please.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to put the 13th report of the Planning and Environment Committee on the floor. I will be pulling 14, which is 3.6, and 18, which is 3.10. I have not heard from anyone else, so.
So shall we ask?
If there are any other items that council would like to pull?
I couldn't have said that better. I see none, so you're putting on the floor all but 3.6 and 3.10, Counselor?
Yes, I'll put items 1 to 19 on the floor. And, your worship, in order to provide more clarity in terms of council decision-making and for assistance to the public, we will be incorporating some additional language to the council decisions going forward, and sort of passing this information for council's information. And so therefore, excluding items 14 and 18, the clause now that we will be adding at council meetings, it being noted that any and all written submissions relating to applications that were made to the planner on file, the Planning and Environment Committee, and to municipal council, as well as oral submissions made at the public meeting held under the Planning Act, have been, on balance, taken into consideration by council as part of its deliberations regarding these matters. And these are for items 1 to 19 that I'm putting on the floor.
Now, I'll come back to the clerk on that. Does that require any formal approval, the direction from the chair clerk?
Your worship, it's being noted, clause subject to direction from council, I would say no, it does not.
All right. Thank you very much. Do you wish to make any comments on all but 14 or 18, Counselor Hopkins?
Yes, if I may, your worship.
I learned that from Counselor Pelosi. You have to give people a chance, you say.
As always, it's a busy Planning and Environment Committee meeting, and there were a number of consent items, and of course, 11 public participation meetings. I do want to make note of number 15 and number 16, these two applications. The first one is 2009 More Cliff Road South. It is in Ward 9. And I just want to bring to the council's attention that this is sort of a mixed-use four-story residential commercial. It's that missing middle, and it's on underserved land, and it's really something that I want to thank the applicant working with staff to bring this application forward. As well as number 16, too, which is 3524 Colonel Talbot Road. Again, this mixed-use residential commercial, underutilized land. These are really good projects, that missing metal coming forward. I do want to make note that we did make some changes to the recommendation, and do want to thank the committee for supporting some of the concerns that we heard from the community, in particular, the intersection of Colonel Talbot and Pack Road, how we enter and exit with these left-hand turns and the challenges. So it being noted in that recommendation as it goes through the site plan. And some good news story, good news story 3.3, which is the request to remove the fugitive slave chapel from the property of 432 Gray Street and moving it to Fanshawe Pioneer Village. And with that, those are my comments.
Thank you very much. I next have Counselor Van Hols. Comments on all, with the exception of 14 and 18, which are 3.6 and 3.10. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, your worship, and thanks to the committee for a long, perhaps seven-hour meeting. A lot of work was done. I wanted to bring attention to item 3.4 or 12 on our agenda, the 18 Elm Street project. So here, the city purchases a school, and we're having the HTC build a wonderful affordable housing complex in conjunction with our indigenous communities that will be taking over that project. That's a wonderful new story. And a special thanks for number 17, the demolition request. That's going to provide some important parking for the corridor, and especially the church that years ago sold their property to the school for a dollar. So I think that's a fitting return, or certainly a helpful one for that. So thank you for those items.
Thank you. Although, Counselor, I've never heard anyone thank somebody for a seven-hour meeting before, but that's all the fun of this stuff, I suppose. Counselor Lewis, go ahead, please.
Thank you, your worship. I won't repeat everything that Counselor Van Hols just said. I concur that 18 Elm Street is a great development there, and certainly thank the Catholic Women's League for their input and the Holy Cross congregation as well as this development has moved forward. They've been providing some input on this as well, so appreciate their contributions to that. I really wanted to draw attention to the request to remove the fugitive slave chapel as well. Counselor Hopkins touched on that, and I just want to say, your worship, that when we approved the funding through the Community Reserve Fund, you issued a challenge to get it done, and this is the next step in getting it done. So I want to recognize the work of the coordinating committee and the staff at Fanshawe Pioneer Village for moving this forward and getting it done.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions, colleagues, on all but those two items? Counselor Holmer.
Very briefly, I wanted to thank the committee for supporting the heritage alteration permit for the Elizabeth Street project. This is one of those necessary infrastructure projects, but it's happening in a heritage conservation district. And what we have here is a narrowing of the street, which is proposed, there were other changes, and we're going to add a little bit more space in the boulevard once the street is reconstructed, which I think in the long run is going to help with a traffic calming, providing a bit more green space in the urban core. And I think it's going to be really welcome once it's completed. I know there's been a lot of construction in this area last year and this year, and there will be next year as well. But there's hope of in the future that it's going to be all over soon, and we can enjoy the great space.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, colleagues? So with that, with the exception of items 3.6 and 3.10, which are 14 and 18 on your broad agenda, we will call the question.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 14 to 0.
Counselor Hopkins.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I'd like to put up item 14, which is clause 3.6, on to Vice Chair Counselor Lehman. I would like to just again note that it being noted that any and all written submissions relating to the application that were made to the planner on file, the Planning and Environment Committee, and to the municipal council, as well as oral submissions made at the public meeting held under the Planning Act, have been, on balance, taken into consideration by council as part of its deliberations regarding this matter. I did not support it, and I will now pass it over to Counselor Lehman.
Counselor Lehman, please.
Thank you. I'll put number 14, 3.6 Parking Standards Review, on the floor.
So noted. Comments or questions? Counselor Turner, go ahead, please.
Thanks, your worship. I just wanted to explain why I voted against the sec committee. I think staff have done a lot of work in bringing this forward and have made good forward movement. I think it's important that we start to recognize that parking is a really bad use of land, and there are much better uses of land, whether that be housing or greenscaping, gardens, things like that. But parking is probably the worst use of land within our city. And so being able to move towards removing the minimum parking requirements in some key areas of the city and adjusting some of the minimum parking, where we haven't removed those minimum parkings numbers altogether, that's huge. And so I'm so glad to see us moving forward in that direction. Why I voted against it was I don't think we were going far enough, and those were in a few key areas. Trauma removed to minimum parking standards citywide, with the exception of a few areas. The City of London has the opportunity to do so as well. There was some discussion in the report talking about putting parking maximums in place, but stating that the work had not yet been done to be able to determine what those maximums should be. And there was no discussion about an assignment or a dedication of electrified spots for electric vehicle recharging. I think those are really key components if we're going to be able to take a look at this. And when I asked questions at committee, it was stated that it would be part of a further review, but there was no clear timeline and no clear plan on how that would be accomplished or incorporated into the next version of this. So that's the reason why I voted against it. But as I said, I think this is a good start, but I think it's kind of not to the degree that we need to be doing after having declared a climate emergency.
Thank you very much. Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and I sort of was hoping that we could have this deferred back, but I don't think there was the will there at committee to have the referral back. But I do want to take this opportunity to thank staff. We've made some significant changes with this review. I think a lot of the changes we're already doing. And I really agree with Counselor Turner when we should be able to be able to be more innovative when it comes to what other large municipalities are doing, when it comes to their parking. I am very supportive of having different modes of transportation in our city. We are, as a city, the fastest-growing city in Ontario, according to the latest census. And I think with that, we should be able to be a bit more innovative, and I think we can be. And I would hope that there'll be some opportunities with being a bit more innovative in the near future. As much as I won't be supporting this, I just do want to encourage the continuation of how we use our parking spaces, but also when it comes to electrification and these stations that I think will start to become the future of most cities in Ontario. So with that, again, my thanks to staff for these significant changes, but would really hope that we would be able to do a little bit more.
Thanks very much. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Van Hols.
Thank you, your worship, and I have a question through you to staff. Just regarding the types of proposals that we'll continue to get at the Planning Committee in each one of these, that we talk about parking, now that there's no minimum parking, will we still find out how many parking spaces are intended in this? Or would somebody be able to build an apartment tower, have no parking in it, and that would sneak by our oversight?
Sneaking by is a pretty interesting term. Let's see if Mr. Barrett has an opinion.
Thank you, through your worship. Yeah, I'm not too sure how much sneaks by. What this bylaw would in fact do, it would remove the minimum parking standards within four of the place types. So downtown Transit Village, the Rapid Transit Quarter, and the main place type. So it's not a matter of anything sneaking through. With no parking standard, there would be no parking requirement that we would have to enforce or report on. I'd like to remind the members of council that in fact, as it stands right now, there are no parking requirements for residential development in the downtown. But very often, parking is provided, but it is not provided as a result of a requirement in the bylaw. So nothing would sneak through, because nothing would be required. As it relates to the other parking standards, what it is that is being recommended before this evening is taking our existing standards and by and large, cutting them in half. So the standards that would be applied would be half the standards that are currently applied in the bylaw. But as I noted, none of those standards would apply within those four place types.
So I want to help Counselor Van Hols a little bit. What I thought I heard him say is, will the information related to parking be available, even if it's not required at Planning and Environment Committee as it has in the past? Mr. Barrett?
Through your worship, we would be able, I would assume, be able to report on parking that is being provided as part of the development that would come forward as information provided by the applicant, but we wouldn't have anything to report on, because we would not be requiring parking.
Okay. Counselor Van Hols, back to you.
Thank you, your worship. It seems like the information will be there. And though I wish I'd picked a word other than sneak, that's the one that came to mind. The concern that was expressed at the meeting was that some development may have offered no parking, and then the burden then becomes on the surrounding streets or becomes a burden on the adjacent developments to provide that. So that was a concern that came up. I just wanted to find out if we would be somehow monitoring that as it's going on, as these developments are being made, or we would find out afterwards that there was a problem, for instance, from complaints from the neighboring residential communities. So thank you. I'll support the plan as it's been presented.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions with regard to this? Counselor Fife Miller, please.
Thank you, your worship, and through you, when I sat in on the planning meeting the other night, when this item came up, I think it was interesting, because I think Counselor Turner and I, when we each read the report, looked at it and sort of were surprised from different ends of the spectrum. And but at the same point in time, I think we both agree on one thing, and that is that this is a positive step forward, and I think that's really important. And I'll agree with him. We need to continue to move these steps forward as things change and as we move forward to what will benefit the community the most. But I'm happy with this report. As, you know, as someone who represents the downtown, I see that this isn't changing the parking restrictions of the downtown. It's changing those minimums that are needed. And so I think this is a successful step forward for this community. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I see none. We will call the question.
Closing the vote. Motion carries twelve to two.
Thank you. Councillor Lehman.
Worship, I'd like to put number eighteen, one oh six seven, one oh six nine, and one oh seven one Wellington Road. There was the committee voted for a referral. It was a split vote. So I'd like to put that on the floor.
Thanks very much. That has been put on the floor. Any comments or questions? Councillor Pelosi.
Thank you, your worship. I'm asking council this evening to defeat the referral. I have pre circulated a motion to council that's been clerked and gone through staff that I would like to have an opportunity to discuss. The main things at the planning environment committee. Thank you to the committee itself and staff and all those who were there as it was a marathon of a meeting. And the hour grew late. It was about ten thirty before we even got to this item. And the it was referred back to staff to try and find a way forward as the main sticking point was a few more site plan related things and the affordable housing concern. And I've spent time with all parties involved. And I do believe we found a way forward. I'd like an opportunity to discuss that. So in order to do so, I need you to defeat the referral in order to discuss the motion I wish to bring forward.
Do you have a sector for that? I see councillor Lewis. Thank you. Further comment? Councillor Pelosi, are we are you good?
Yeah, this is strictly to defeat the motion that's before us, so I'll stick to that point to for clarity.
Councillor Lewis.
Thank you, worship. I I was actually raising my hand not to second an alternate motion, but to speak to the the defeat of the referral because that takes precedence in this case. I moved the referral at committee. But I am actually going to speak in favor of defeating the referral tonight. I think there are two paths forward to this. I have spoken to councillor Pelosi several times over the weekend as she's talked to me about this development as well. And I think that she deserves an opportunity as the ward councillor to put an alternate on the floor. And I think that it's either going to be that alternate or the staff recommendation and and we are either going to appeal or not. So rather than take up time with a referral and a return on August twenty second, I think it's best that we move forward with this tonight.
And in the spirit of that, Colleagues, clearly anyone who wishes to speak to this issue should the referral fail, then we certainly will open that up to comments and questions. So with that, are there any other comments that would be useful? I see councillor Cassidy. This is on the referral. Go ahead, councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, your worship. I I have concerns about the referral, so I'm I'm I will be voting against the referral. My main concern is is delaying an opportunity to have some affordable housing, additional affordable housing built in the city, knowing that our ability to use a bonus zone is coming to an end. So I I want to see something here approved and passed. And I would like to see something get built soon here, so I won't be voting in favor of referral.
You won't be voting. Did I hear that correctly? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you very much. You won't be voting in favor of the referral, which means you would be voting to support councillor Pelosi's motion. I just want to.
I'm anxious to hear what councillor Pelosi's motion to hear.
No, no, I'm not talking. No, I'm sorry. I'm not talking about the motion beyond defeating the referral. I'm talking about defeating the referral.
I'm not supporting the referral. Thank you.
Got it. Councillor Helmer, you're next.
Thank you. Just on the issue of the referral, we're talking about the difference between the August second and having it come back on the twenty second of August, right? So I I'm happy to support the referral. I got the motion that councillor Pelosi circulated fifteen minutes before the meeting started. And this is a pretty significant development. Just glancing at the text, there's a couple of things in there I'm not so sure about. So it seems to me like twenty days is not actually a long time to wait to have this issue come back to planning committee. If this is the direction that ends up happening, so be it. I know that it's been underway for a long time, but it seems to me like a referral might make a lot of sense, even though there seems to be very few people supporting it at this point for one reason or another. So I'll vote in favor of the referral and I'll deal with the other motion if it comes up.
Thank you. On the referral, councillor Turner.
I thank you, worship. But if I might through you to Mr. Barrett, perhaps. How does a positive recommendation come forward to committee where where the applicant doesn't agree with it? Typically, where we see is a recommendation for refusal and then the applicant has has pushed forward with with something that they wish to see put in front of council, notwithstanding some lack of agreement, I guess, with with staff. In this case, we have a recommendation for approval. And and then in the meeting, we ended up getting some lack of agreement from the applicant, which which I found odd. So I just perhaps a little bit of background on what occurred there.
Mr. Barrett.
Thank you, through your worship. If I understand that the councillor's correct question correctly, the what 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 brings a positive recommendation is is a recommendation of staff and then it's it's staff's recommendation that's in front of you. What occurred at the committee was some discussion that that I believe the committee was not prepared to either approve the staff recommendation nor refuse the staff recommendation, but rather was seeking the opportunity to see an amended recommendation, an amended bylaw that addressed two major elements, if I may. One was removal of explicit reference to floor plate size in an amending bylaw. And then the second was an affordable housing provision that provided for sixty five affordable housing units, but provided for a greater number of what the committee discussed as family related units, which would be two and three bedroom units. So there was no positive or negative recommendation coming out as a result of the committee's recommendation. The committee referred the matter back to have these two matters addressed was was my understanding of the committee's actions.
Councillor Turner.
Thank you, worship. If I might clarify, typically when the committee receives a recommendation from staff, and it's either an approval recommendation or refusal recommendation. And I guess my understanding over the years is that an approval recommendation was one that the applicant has brought forward that staff agreed with and are recommending for approval by council. Typically, a refusal recommendation is one that staff disagreed with, but the applicant wished to have forward in front of council, notwithstanding the the lack of ability to to come to an accord with with staff. So in this circumstance, we have a recommendation for approval, which which to me would indicate that the applicant at the time that this was brought forward to the council agenda was in agreement with the recommendation of staff. But then at council ended up, after the agenda had been published, or at committee, sorry, council committee received a delegation from from the applicant stating they wished a couple of clauses changed and being presented with an alternate motion. So that all seems strange to me, I guess, in terms of process. Was the applicant on board with the initial recommendation as it was put forward to the agenda and then subsequently changed their position?
Mr. Barrett.
Thank you, through your worship, and I appreciate the clarification. The what 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 the the situation the councillor described is generally what happens, but there have actually been a couple of instances in the recent past where the recommendation that we have brought forward to you has not been force where with what the applicant has proposed. But we believe that the bulk of what the application applicant had requested was merit had merit and was worthy of staff's recommendation. So that's what we brought forward. And in this instance, as it relates to the staff recommendation for this report, that's what we did bring forward. The applicant, in all fairness, had expressed concerns with respect to us including a numerical representation in the bylaws that related to floor plate size for the towers and and the notion of the proportionality. However, we, as I indicated at the at the public meeting, staff saw a lot of merit in the application and were really looking to to make it work and and based that number on, in fact, the floor plate of one of the towers that was in this proposal. So we felt that that number and that that tower that staff were satisfied met the slim tower criterion, for want of a better term, for what it was that we were looking for with respect to the form of this development. And we, given that 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 tower floor plate was was within the proposal of the applicant, we thought that 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 would work. As the committee heard, when we got to the committee, the applicant disagreed with that provision and some of the other provisions as they related to design. And certainly, the applicant did not agree with the staff interpretation as to the calculation of the of the number of units that should be considered as appropriate for the bonusing. And that's where we diverted. But again, as as I indicated at the outset, by and large, there was a lot of concurrence between the applicant's request and what staff felt was appropriate to recommend. And that was the reason there was a positive recommendation in front of you that did not have the full concurrence of the applicant.
Councillor Turner.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Barrett. I appreciate that. I'm going to recommend this is a tough spot because I I'm having a quick glance at what councillor Pelosi has put forward as the alternative. I really don't like that because it seems to reflect precisely what the applicant had put forward in an alternate motion. I I have huge problems whenever applicants do that. It's it completely subverts a process. It's I I find it grossly inappropriate. And we've seen it several times, and this councils has entertained those several times, which is why we're starting to see it more and more and more. And and it frustrates me. And perhaps I sound visibly frustrated, but I I think what what you heard from Mr. Barrett was that there was a fairly significant amount of work between the applicant and staff to be able to come up with something that that is, as described by the applicant, a transformational project. There is this. This is exactly when we talk about our policies and our policies having impact, this is it. Our policies identified where our transit villages would be as places to grow and places to intensify. And that's what's occurring here. At the same time, the debate at that committee talked about reducing the number of affordable housing units that that are kind of predicated based on the the amount of lift, the extra the extra density that's going to occur as a result of of the height and and the floor plate specifically within this within this development. And it seems really weird when we're talking about trying to get as much affordable housing as possible. And then we're going to provide relief to that requirement to the tune of over thirty units. That doesn't square very well with the with the words that councils had and.
Thirty seconds, councillor.
In terms of being able to put a lot of money into affordable housing. And and this moves us backwards. So I hope you'll defeat the motion, but I also hope that you'll defeat what I see coming as the alternate motion because the staff recommendation is the most appropriate one here. I recognize that we're talking about the referrals, so there'll be more opportunities to talk as well as as that comes forward to.
Thank you. Councillor Hopkins.
Thank you, your worship, and I I find this a little unusual. And I'm just going to speak to the referral. I do not support it at planning. One of the reasons I didn't support it at planning is that I found it a very unusual process that was taking place at committee when we have a recommendation coming from staff supporting an application. We heard from the public their concerns about the intensification. Thank the councillor for the work that she's done with the community here, but the referral coming out of committee was something that I found very unusual, that we would just be supporting the applicant's changes on the committee floor. And given the two concerns, one being the affordable housing part of it, and the applicant was proposing sixty five units, the recommendation was ninety three. Most recommendations, when it comes to affordable housing, we do the ten percent lift that comes up with the ninety three units to get the bonusing. But the other part, and Mr. Barrett, thank you very much for your your expertise on this. And it is a little confusing when we talk about the floor plate. But from what I understand, what was also important with the recommendation that staff supported was the appropriate form for this slender tower. So those two things were not supported at all in the referral going back. And I want to just also mention that I have not seen the motion. It's been locked out of my emails. And I just want to make just speak to the referral. But I think it's really important that we understand staff's recommendations and the reasons behind why this recommendation has come to us. So I won't be supporting the referral. Look forward to hearing the next step along this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'm going to ask the clerk, because we've talked around all of this to make sure that we're precisely clear on the motion and what we'd be voting on. Clerk, if you would, please.
Thank you, worship. If I could ask Miss Wesley Power to do the reading for me, scrap.
Go ahead.
For the chair.
Yes.
The referral motion from committee reads as follows. Would the following actions be taken with respect to the application by Century Center Development relating to the property, property located at ten sixty seven, ten seventy one Wellington Road? Part A, the application be referred back to allow the civic administration and the applicant to give further consideration to the ten fifty square meter floor plate condition as recommended by the applicant and to direct municipal housing to have a further discussion with the applicant with respect to a larger mix of unit sizes in terms of affordable units and to further negotiate sixty five affordable units, specifically to increase the ratio of two and three bedroom units that would be available and to report back to a public participation meeting to be held at the August twenty second, twenty twenty two Planning and Environment Committee meeting. And part B is pursuant to section thirty four sub seventeen of the Planning Act, no further notice given. In addition to that, there's reference to the matters that were matters and submissions that were received by the committee.
Thank you very much. Any other final comments or questions? I see none. We will call the question.
Closing the vote. Motion fails. Two to twelve.
Thank you. So where do we go from here, folks? I see councillor close. I'll recognize you.
Your worship, I'd like to put on the floor the motion that was pre circulated to council in regards to this item, and I believe a seconder in councillor Lewis.
Councillor Lewis, I'd like to hear that verbally, please. Is a yes, your worship? Thank you very much. So with that, we will look for comments and questions. Councillor Pelosi, why don't we let you start?
Thank you. I'll ask the clerks to put the motion on the floor, realizing councillor Hopkins said she couldn't have access to it. It is a longer. It is a longer motion for council that was circulated in advance. You got the exact copy that I sent to the clerks for all items were indicated in red that were changing, so we had full transparency. This is the first time this application has become before council itself. As they've had community consultations behind the scenes, which I was involved in with the word as the word counselor. And with the developer to take into those considerations and working with staff. So yes, you are going to see similarities between my thoughts and the developers. As I took into consideration what some of the community concerns were, and I do believe that is appropriate as the work we do as board counselors. I'd like to thank city staff, H D C staff, and the developers for their time, insights, and work on this file. We're united in finding a way to bring more housing and more affordable housing options to all Londoners. We have worked through some site plans concerned that were contained within the bylaws. Concerning glass on lower floors and balconies, as we've also received other committee reports, becoming a bird-friendly city. Resident concerns regarding garbage pickup and some other accessibility concerns have already been addressed prior to this coming to committee. Encouraging, including the buildings along Montgomery to have. Ten stories instead of the original towers that were set to be there. As this was a direct resident concern, asking for more distancing from the buildings. Onto community neighborhoods that are mainly adjacent to it or one, like two-story homes. The floor plate size reduction. Would have an impact on the three-bedroom units. We know three-bedroom units can help. Would reduce probability of rentals, but they are essential in these neighborhoods. The neighborhood that this building is slated for is a complete neighborhood. There's splash pads, the Jell-O library. Community parks and White Oaks Park and a park across the street for green space. And ideally, this would be a place that families and multi-generational families can move into. This is on the Bus Rapid Transit corridor and is the South Transit Village, and this type of build, as you've heard from staff. Fits within those plans of what we envision and what the London Plan envisions for this area. As for the affordable housing concern. The concerns seem to come up at Planning Environment Committee of if we're following the nineteen eighty-nine plan or the London Plan. If it was the developers, the London Plan sets out thirty-six units. Staff requests ninety-three. At committee, we heard about sixty-five units. In working with. The developer and staff, we've come back with a proposal for twenty-eight one-bedroom units. Twenty-seven two-bedroom units and ten three-bedroom units. In total, this actually equates to one hundred and twelve bedrooms. Whereas if these were mainly singles, we would be sitting at the nine. All the ninety-three. So we are above. Ninety-three spaces for people to sleep. Recognizing, though, it's a hundred and twelve bedrooms with this mix across the board. These are affordable units at eighty percent of average market rent. And this is going to be for thirty-five years, so that is a change. That we've come to as an increase of what the proposal originally was from the developers. The H G T C have confirmed that this is, there is a need for affordable housing units. And that this location factors align with the housing needs and priorities defined in the Housing Stability Plan for All. In speaking with the CEO, Ms. Espinoza. She has confirmed that the three-bedroom units, the twos and ones are all needed as a mixture, none will go to waste. Though we did recognize at committee, Counselor Turner had mentioned that there is a high demand for the one-bedroom units. And I just want to confirm that those three bedrooms that we're getting, being as there are ten of them, that they are needed and will be well-used. So I'm asking for your support of this motion. That city council support it, as we know that creating more affordable housing.
Thirty seconds.
Is essential, and this also conforms with the London Plan of accommodating forty-five percent of future residential growth. In the built area boundary, and this is on the B R T corridor and Transit Village place type. I recognize that my residents. Don't want this building immediately in their neighborhood and believe it should go south of the four oh one, but that is not the place type. Of what this application is, and that's why I support a larger development in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Shalee.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Through you, I just wanted to just note that my previous vote should have been. No, not yes. So I just wanted to apologize for that. So I won't ask for reconsideration, but just want that noted. That's all.
I'm sorry. Are you looking for formal consideration of a change of your vote?
No, no, it's all good. I just wanted that noted. That's all.
All right. Thank you very much. Noted. Counselor Lewis, please.
Thank you, worship, and I'm pleased to second Counselor Ploza's motion and have the opportunity to speak to it. And I think Counselor Turner actually asked a really good question. Why are staff bringing forward a recommendation for approval? On something the builder themselves is not willing to bring forward to build? And I think we have to ask that question. You know, we we also saw. In our submissions, a letter from the London Home Builders Association and and Mr. Zafman. About the fact that we really come down to two differences here. One is a divergence in regard to urban design. And the other is in regard to the number of affordable housing units. Both of which were things that I referenced in the original referral. But I don't think it should surprise anyone when the developer says, we're not going to. Go ahead, we're going to appeal if you put forward the staff recommendation. That we would want to refer. Now we're going to discuss an alternative to that. But when we come down to these two issues. You know, it's not very long ago. In fact, it was earlier this summer. That the Ontario Land Tribunal issued a decision. On a tower we did approve. That had fewer affordable units in it, and they, in fact. Found they upheld the decision that we made. Now we seem to be going the other way here. So in that medallion property in the Old East Village area. The O L T upheld our choice of affordable units, and in that situation. Those affordable units were based on density under the London Plan. Now we're, we see. A guideline here, and it's a guideline. In the nineteen eighty-nine official policy. And Mr. Zafman referenced it in his communication, nineteen point four four. That the facility services or matters that would be provided in consideration of a heightened density bonus should be reasonable. In terms of their cost benefit implications for both the city and the developer. And must result in a benefit to the general public. And I think that that cost benefit implication is really important there. Because our planners and and the Planning Act and ourselves, when we're making our considerations. On whether to approve something or not, we're not really looking at the economics, but the developer is. The person who's going to build the building has to look at the economics. And when they say that they are going to. Appeal a staff recommendation if we approve it because it doesn't work for them economically. There's a reason that they're doing that. When we talk about all of the the differences back and forth in this application. You know, slim tower. And you know, I respect where Mr. Barrett's comments come from. But a slim tower is a matter of an urban design interpretation. There's not a specific floor plate number in the London Plan that defines something as a slender tower. It's an interpretation. It's contextual to the neighborhood. And we've heard. Through Counselor Ploza, the comments about in this particular neighborhood. Those three-bedroom units are going to get filled up quickly, but if we shorten that tower floor plate by twenty feet. Which is what the staff recommendation would have done, that the developer will. Balance losing that space by reducing some three-bedroom units to two. And so we'll have fewer family units. So what we've seen since this was at committee was that. There is a willingness to extend the affordability, the number of years for a longer period of time to thirty-five years. There's also a commitment in there. Which was missing before. That advances all of these units in the first three towers. So we get them all earlier in the development than we would have otherwise. And we get more family units. So to me, in the cost benefit analysis and the implications of that. That is a fair trade-off to vary slightly from urban. Guideline on design. And again, it's a guideline. It's an interpretation. There's a lot in the London Plan that is very contextual. It is not a hard, fast number. But it is an interpretation of what fits in the neighborhood. And I know three-bedroom neighborhood, three-bedroom apartments fit. In the White Oaks neighborhood where Counselor Ploza is representing and has worked on this development.
Thirty seconds, Counselor.
Thank you, your worship. So I do encourage councillors to support this tonight. I think it's very clear, and it was referenced again in the home builders letter. It's been referenced by the applicant as well. It's. Otherwise, we're going to an appeal process and looking at potentially years of delay before shovels get in the ground on desperately needed affordable housing. And I will take those sixty-five units today. With more family units and for a longer period of time than the developer was originally prepared to offer. Because I think that the community benefit is there.
Thank you. Counselor Turner, please.
Thanks, your worship. First, I think there's some significant corrections to what Counselor Lewis just said there that need to be said. First, the medallion application appeal was because an agency believes that we should be placing more. Affordable housing, which is true, but it has no bearing on whether. The staff and the recommendations were appropriate. They were. They were in line with our planning documents. Perhaps I might actually, Mr. Barrett gave a very good explanation. Of how the calculation was arrived at. And and maybe through you, your worship, perhaps if Mr. Barrett could could repeat what he said at Planning Committee. Because I think it's really important for all of council to hear as we start to talk about that calculation.
Perhaps a nice tight explanation would be useful. Mr. Barrett, go ahead, please.
Thank you, through your worship. I will attempt to be tight. First off, though, I do want to take this opportunity to just. Also. Correct a statement that was made. In fact, the O L T's decision on medallion. In fact, in paragraph sixty-seven, which is the first citation that the member makes as it relates to bonus owning, even headed as bonus owning. Section nineteen point four point four. And the tribunal found that bonus owning policies of the city's new official plan, the London Plan, are not enforced. As such, the policies that are applied to all section thirty-seven bylaws in the City of London are the policies from the nineteen eighty-nine official plan. And then in brackets, the eighty-nine plan. So in fact, the tribunal did not turn their minds to the London Plan policies. There was no interpretation of London Plan policies for the purpose of the calculation of the bonusing. And also, I would also like to correct that, in fact, the calculation that was done for the medallion application was ten percent of the lift. As it relates to the calculation that was done here. The calculation is based on the density that's permitted and the area of the development. In this instance. The density that would be applied under nineteen point four four from the nineteen eighty-nine official plan and policies of the official plan would be a hundred and fifty units per hectare. The nineteen eighty-nine official plan, unlike the London Plan, actually specified densities for three areas of the downtown. It identified a maximum density of three hundred and fifty units per hectare in the downtown. Two hundred and fifty units per hectare in central London, which was an area described as Oxford Street to Adelaide Street and the two rivers as the boundaries. And then a hundred and fifty units per hectare for all the remaining areas. The hundred and fifty units per hectare multiplied by the lot area of this development would yield. And I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. I apologize. In the neighborhood of three hundred units. Over three hundred units. What is being recommended in this and what was being recommended in this application was. A number over twelve hundred units closer to thirteen hundred units. And the difference between that base. Of the three hundred and I believe forty-three units and the twelve hundred and ninety-two. Was a number over nine hundred units and ten percent of that number resulted in the ninety-three units. So that's how the calculation was done, and that was the basis of the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Counselor Turner.
Thank you. That's very helpful. A second thing that needs to be corrected is the duration of affordability. And the staff recommended by law, it was fifty years, and what's being put forward now is thirty-five years. That's a fairly significant change. From what to what was originally recommended for approval by staff. So we've seen almost thirty units less and fifteen years less of affordability. That's a huge change, folks. I that we are clear in our policies. They they are permissive to this. It is based on a calculation based on the lift. This is a massive development. Of course, the developer is going to ask for more because they make more money. That's that's what they do. It's it's appropriate for them to do. It's not appropriate for us to grant it. It we we put these policies in place because we want to make some headway. Especially on housing affordability and affordable housing specifically. This is thirty fewer people or households that will be placed in affordable housing as a result. The question of expediency, the threat of an appeal. As you heard, Mr. Barrett, our position was upheld in the medallion. Application because we applied the the policies that were in place. Our position is quite strong going into appeal, if that's what they wish to do. My guess is that they don't go into appeal because of how much is on the line. If they were to appeal and and have this postponed for one year, two years. The size of this development would cost them far more than what thirty affordable housing minutes would cost them. I I said this at at committee, but we are awful negotiators. And part of the reason is we have to do that in public. Sitting at this council table and everybody gets to see our position and everybody gets to see our hands. But you are not good at it. And and I I really am concerned about this alternate motion because. We're just taking the words of the developer and putting it in front of council and saying, let's approve that. It's not the way to go. Staff spent a lot of time working with the applicant to try and make sure that 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 something came forward here that that was reasonable. This is a great development. Let's do it. But let's do it as it's proposed within within the bylaws and proposal of staff. We also talked a little bit earlier about parking. If this is a transit corridor, this is a major transit village. This is one of the places where we could go further. If you really wanted to change something. Let's take a look at the policies that that were just approved. On parking minimums, and let's remove the parking minimums here. Give them more space to develop based on that. Or remove some of the costs associated with this development. That would be the place to take a peek. If we wanted to provide a relief to the to the applicant, because we just did that as a matter of policy, not thirty minutes ago. But I urge you to reject this. Let's come back forward with with what the staff recommendation was. It's prudent. It's reasonable. What's what's in front of us now is basically just to just kowtowing to the developers.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Helmer, go ahead.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we've had. Many instances now where staff have a very clear recommendation and. It seems like council is going to. Ignore that advice. The reason I say it seems like is because we're not really having a. Wide-ranging discussion where I think people are trying to convince each other. I think people have a sense going into this meeting what was going to happen. With this motion. You know, the motion was circulated. Literally five minutes before the meeting started. I thought there was a very reasonable suggestion that there be a referral to provide a little bit more time for everybody to talk about. Some of these key issues, you know, the. Design of the towers, the number of affordable units, the duration of the affordability period. Which we've done many times in the past, and. Instead of. Taking some time to very clearly see what this bylaw would look like, what the recommendation might be, if there's some kind of. A compromise that can be found. We've just got the alternative, which is essentially what. The developers would prefer. And I think that's a really bad way of severed from the merits of this particular issue, a bad way of making the decisions. What we're doing is really disempowering planning staff, who are the experts when it comes to planning issues. We're we're changing the level at which the developers are trying to negotiate the elements of bonusing. Instead of being with the staff. Who can apply these things very fairly. And repeatedly over time, we're taking it up to the level of council, which is just leads to inconsistent decision-making. In some cases, bad decision-making, and as we have seen. Repeatedly, adversely, on many of these issues where there's been a clear recommendation for refusal or. Some kind of divergence between staff and the council decision. Lots of appeals. We've had several official plan amendments.
Lots of appeals. We've had several official plan amendments. We've we've approved them and they're under appeal now. Because they're not consistent with their own policies. And if we keep making decisions this way, that's going to keep happening. I don't know if this one's going to get appealed. Maybe not. But I I just want to emphasize that this is not a good way of making the decisions. On the actual specifics of the application, I think this is a tremendous opportunity for a great infill and having some large. Towers here with tons of residentialism is awesome. Whether it's sixty five units or ninety three units, I think having some affordability, some new units built. Is really important. And and I I actually hear where the developers are coming from in terms of calculating the lift. You know, I read the letter from Trillo. I think it's very reasonable a position to take. And I think that that could have been worked out in a in a referral. Unfortunately, because we haven't had that. I'm left to try and make a decision on this motion that's in front of me from councillor Pelosi and councillor Lewis. And I will point out that although councillor Pelosi has said that it would be thirty five years. The actual language in the document that was circulated by email says thirty years. And so this is just an example of the kind of inconsistency and confusion that can come up. If we're going to make decisions this way. I don't want to harp on it, but it's like, that's a big difference, thirty five and thirty. I'm I'm taking councillor Pelosi at her words and she's the one introducing the motion that is thirty five, right? But I haven't seen the bylaws, the revised bylaws. We'll have to look, get those circulated. There's not such a rush that we have to do it this way. I'm going to vote no against the bylaw. Even though I probably, if it had been referred, could have come around to support some kind of compromise on this on this issue. Especially around the affordability and how they get provided. Probably not on the duration and I I want to echo what councillor Turner said. You know, cutting the duration period from fifty to thirty five is a significant difference and. You know, I I really wish we were doing this in a. More consistent way where we were listening to the advice from our staff about. These planning issues and and following it, you know, and not and not coming up with. Our own compromises either at the planning committee or here at council on very short notice. It's it's not going to speed things up. I know that's what people have said. They want things to go faster. But I'm telling you, it's not. It hasn't so far and it's not going to.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, your worship. And I voted no on the original referral motion. And the irony for me here with this motion, with with the incredible detail in this motion and the incredible. Changes that are proposed compared to what the staff recommendation was. Is that this motion, this is this is this should have been referred to staff. There's I I agree with councillor Turner. I agree with councillor Helmer. There is much too much here. I have a question for through you, Mr Mayor, to Mr Barrett. What is the date that the London Plan would be due to be reviewed? Because normally, and I believe it's written in the Planning Act as well, that there is a regular review of an official plan. I believe it's at five years. And even though we went through a long appeal process with the London Plan, it's been over five years since it was. Originally approved by council and by the ministry. So through you to Mr Barrett. When is the the review of the London Plan due to take place?
Thank you, your worship. Comprehensive review, the Plan Act changed. It actually said it's ten years after. A new OP in five years, every five years thereafter. Either way, ten years from twenty sixteen is twenty twenty six. However, as we've reported out to committee and council. Previously, we're already gearing ourselves up for a comprehensive review now. The first step in that is going forward through the exercise that we are doing now and we've reported out on already. As it relates to the update of the population, employment and household projection. That work will then lead to a land needs analysis that leads to the whole discussion on whether or not additional lands would be required. To meet our twenty year planning horizon and all that is within the purview of a comprehensive review. That's a long winded way of saying we're actually in that process and we'll be working through that through twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four.
To be fair, we would never reference any of your comments as long winded. So you know, sir, so Mr Barrett. So back to you, councillor Cassidy, please.
So thank you, Mr Mayor. So when I when I read this at the start of this discussion. That was what jumped out at me first is part A, looking at making a significant policy change to the London Plan. On the floor of council when this should be done through a review process. So I won't support doing something like that. I came into this meeting not willing to hear about making compromises on what the staff. Recommendation was, what the what the what the proponents wanted. But one thing I didn't want to compromise much, if anything, on was the number of affordable units. And it's fine to say that there's this many bedrooms and all of that. We do know in the city of London, the greatest. Population that is is suffering from housing inequity and from housing availability are single persons. So we can say all the things we want to say about one, two and three bedroom units. It is singles that need housing. At the greatest level. So I wasn't looking to compromise on the number of units. So so, Mr Mayor, I'm going to propose something that that's going to exacerbate, exasperate some people. But based on how comprehensive this proposal is from the councillor. I'm going to make a motion to review, refer this motion back to city staff for review. And to work with the applicant and to bring it back to the next planning committee with their recommendations on this proposal.
Do you have a second for that councillor Cassidy? Is there one?
I don't know.
I don't know either. Let's check. I am not seeing a second or councillor Cassidy.
So, Mr Mayor, I hope that if you could please pull A specifically, because I hope people will absolutely vote against part A. And I plan on voting against this entire motion.
So noted. Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions with regard to this? Councillor, oh, I'm sorry, councillor Hopkins, you were on the list. I apologize. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you to my colleagues for their comments. You know, it's unfortunate that we are here now negotiating. On behalf of the applicant. It it to me is it's unsettling that we are doing that. We are not being transparent when it comes to making. Decisions for what's best for the community. I appreciate the motion and the work the councillor has done. Going into this. But I just received it and I am just not willing to just blindly go yes. To this motion. And I would think, and I would encourage my colleagues, if you are going to support this, give me. Give us reasons why you're doing that. Because it is unsettling to think. That decisions have already been made about this motion before even council started, before I as a councillor even received. The motion. I I've got lots of current concerns here. I I I think the biggest one is that, you know, we rely. On 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 staff and their professional expertise. We rely on our policies. And we're not really giving reasons why we're not going to support that at all. We're just going to come up with our own ideas on behalf of the applicant. And I think it's. It it just is not being very transparent. I would really like to have, you know, this is a great recommendation, a great development. And I think we'll see more of these in our transit villages. But we're not being very open when it comes to, well, we're going to do this over here. And then next application, we're going to do something different. We're not being true to our policies. And I'm glad to hear we're going to be going through a comprehensive review on the London Plan. And I would really encourage my colleagues, if they don't like. The plan, then change that through the comprehensive review. Not do it like this. It's not being transparent. I I I just feel very uncomfortable even standing here speaking. To this motion, which a lot of work went into it. We'd like to know a little bit more of what staff think about it. But I I I can't support it at this moment. Thank you.
And thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councillor Sli, your hand is up. I don't know if that's a. What's that expression when it just was from before, something like that? It is no longer there. You have no hands. All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions, colleagues? Councillor Fyffner, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. And and through you first with this application, I think there's been a lot of work done on this. I think this, a lot of this work started before I before I was here. I think one of the challenges that I have with this, first off, and and maybe this is where some of the confusion I had coming out was. I didn't understand how we got a staff recommendation. That was something that the applicant. Wasn't interested in in the first place. So I I wasn't sure how that came through. I think we got a little bit of an explanation on that. But for me, I look back from the time I was here and a few weeks ago, we passed a development. At the corner of Wonderland and Oxford. And that was a development with no transit corridor going to it right now. This is a development on a transit corridor. And I think one of the things that I've heard all of my colleagues speak about is. The benefits of this development in that area. The ward councillor speaks to the benefits. And to me, the ward councillor speaking to the benefits holds a lot. I recognize that we saw from some of the neighbors that the neighbors are are not happy. But I'll be honest, I've been to a lot of the planning meetings since I came here. I can tell you, I've yet to see neighbors who are excited about infill development next to their homes. So I understand this is impactful. I get that. The question is, even though it's impactful, is it the right thing to do? We have a transit corridor that's being developed to go out Wellington Road to this form of development. When I looked at the information that came out of planning, what I saw was a lot of issues around design. A lot of issues where we couldn't just seem to get that together. But the actual development itself, we seem to agree on. So I look at this and I look at this as an opportunity for us to get housing now and badly needed housing right now. I look for this to get us affordable housing. But I also think one of the things that's really important is when we look at these one bedroom units and where they sit in this city. These units will be affordable to people who are just starting out too, who have the opportunity to move in. For families who are maybe just starting. So I think these are really important pieces as we move forward. And so for me. My big reason for supporting this is because the ward councillor supports this, because the ward councillor is saying that this is important. For her community. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I have Deputy Mayor Morgan, go ahead, please.
Yes, this is not, this is more of a question, your worship. So I I'm I'm very interested in the proposal before us. In part of the. The clauses refers to a a draft bylaw. Frankly, I I'd like to read the the draft bylaw before voting on it. And I wonder since we're past the dinner break time, whether that could be circulated. So I could have a look at it and then be happy to vote after that. But I I would like to see. The actual bylaw that we'd be voting on. I I appreciate the context that's been given on the motion, but I think it's important to read the bylaw as well.
Well, I met your pleasure, colleagues. It was my intention when we dealt with this issue to ask for a fifteen minute bio break. I think that that's never a bad thing and if someone needs to regenerate themselves a little bit, that would be fine. I've never, I've never pushed a meeting off in between a vote, but that's. But that's kind of exciting. So I don't mind considering that if that's the will of council to do that to just. Could we pause for this very moment, take fifteen minutes? It is seven oh five and I really mean fifteen minutes, colleagues, and we would return at seven twenty and resume this or. Do I need a motion for that clerk? I do. Would would anyone be kind of okay with that? I see councillor Hiver saying yes. Councillor Van Holsd is saying yes. Can we do a show of hands if you like the. What's your question, councillor Pelosi?
Sorry, your worship, just a question through you to the clerk of how long would they need to circulate it and then us read it?
I don't know, but I'm taking a fifteen minute break and resuming, so I leave that for the pleasure of anyone else. So I the answer is they'll, people will have it then. So can we do a show of hands? Councillor Van Holsd, or clerk, do you have an issue? Clerk doesn't have an issue, so I'm all good. So cameras on councillor Limon, are you just voting or you just want to? Those in favor, raise your hand.
And that motion carries.
See it seven twenty one. Thank you.
Colleagues, thank you for your indulgence. I was a little naive by suggesting a 15-minute break when it was clear that Councilor Lehman wanted a 30-minute break, so I just respected his wishes, which I found out telepathically was the way we should do this. So thanks for all of your patience for this. Colleagues, I'd like to call on Counselor Morgan, Deputy Mayor Morgan, if I could please, you were just starting your commentary.
Yes, I had asked a question if I could see the bylaw, because it was attached to the motion. I appreciate colleagues giving me the time to look at that. Now that I've had a chance to look at both the message from our clerk, and then they added a second one with the development of the maps, it seems to me that I certainly think that if we're going to move forward with a proposal such as this, we need to make sure that it is all done correct. It is better to do it right than to do it fast. I know Counselor Cassidy made a motion to refer that did not have a second, so we didn't vote on that. But I would now like to, having reviewed the draft bylaw, I would like to make a motion to refer this motion as it's been put on the floor, as well as the bylaw that is drafted and attached to it, back to staff for their review and presentation to the next PEC meeting, essentially what Counselor Cassidy was suggesting. I would have seconded it had I read the bylaw, but it wasn't on the list yet, and I wanted to make sure that it's right. I just really want to make sure if we're going to consider this, that the bylaw aligns with the intent of the motion properly, and there's a chance to discuss that. So I'd be happy to put that referral motion...
And is there a second? I see Counselor Pelosi seconding this. All right, so colleagues, we can go through the whole speakers list again, which we are able to do. I would hope that if anyone has any comments, and I would never want to sway inputs, this is on the referral of Counselor Pelosi's motion. So with that, if people would like to speak, but if you sense your piece that made sense before, our memories are very good, notes are very good, so if there's something new to add, that's great. So let's start a quick speakers list, and Counselor Cassidy, I see your hand up.
Thank you, your worship, and I apologize, my dog's barking in the background. So I'll ask quickly, will, if this is referred back to staff, will this be the limit of staff's review and work? Or, I'm looking through you to Counselor Morgan, or to Deputy Mayor Morgan, if there may be things in this counselor recommendation that doesn't jibe with what staff would, given their, using their expertise as planning professionals, they may not agree with some of the things in here. Will they be limited if this is what we refer back to staff, through you to the deputy mayor?
I will allow the deputy mayor to answer that, but I would be surprised were it not exactly as you've indicated, Counselor Cassidy. But go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
I would be surprised if it wasn't as indicated. However, that's more of a question for our staff. I certainly wasn't intending to limit any sort of innovation in the motion with more time, but a referral back to ensure that, you know, all of the, certainly, the alignment of the bylaw with the motion is important, but I'm not adverse to any sort of other changes, should that be, should that occur. And given it's going back to Planning Committee for a discussion, of course, they would have another go at it as well. So I couldn't presuppose what would happen there either.
Anything else, Counselor Cassidy?
Just, would Mr. Barrett care to comment on a referral of this?
Do you have any brief additional comments, Mr. Barrett?
Through your worship, what staff would do is they would provide, based on council's direction, a technical review to ensure that the bylaw and the motion were in accord, and we're bringing that forward. You've got staff's recommendation already, that's not what's in front of us. What we will be doing is providing you the professional advice to ensure that the bylaw matches the motion and the intent of the motion.
Thank you. Counselor Cassidy, does that answer your question?
It doesn't. It gives me concern, so I'm not sure where I'm going to vote on this. I'm going to listen to my colleagues. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Counselor Turner, if you would, please.
Thank you, your worship. Really quickly, if I might, to the mover, the change in affordable housing, 93 units at 50 years, was about the equivalent of 4,650 housing unit years. The change that's being proposed here is 65 units for 35 years, so that's a 2,275 housing unit years. It's about a 50% reduction, so that's fairly marketed. Is that the intent of the motion? I just want to make sure that that's, that it's recognized, and that that impact is known to all of council.
I think that's two points. I think the second point, you've certainly elucidated. I'll let the deputy mayor respond to the first.
So as for the intent of the motion, I didn't write the motion. I've made a motion for a referral, so that's more of a question for the mover of the original drafted motion. I can't remember the second question, but maybe, maybe that covers it.
The reference was to the, were council members aware of the impact of 35 versus 50 years, if I can paraphrase that slightly, Counselor Turner?
Yeah, and your worship, that was for Counselor Pelosi.
Counselor Pelosi?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, that seemed to be one of the impasses that the developers had come at with staff in the original PEC meeting, and had asked for council's direction on the way forward. They had added in a higher mix of higher bedrooms, and extended their 32, the 50, they originally wanted 30 years, they moved it to 35, and there was an outstanding question, I'm not sure if Mr. Barrett has an answer to this one, of in mid-2021, planning applications went from 30 years for affordable housing to 50, and it was still unanswered of if that was actually a policy, or just how did that change come about, as no answer was ever given. So I'm not sure that ones have helped too, of how we got from 50 to 30.
Counselor Turner, anything further?
Oh, thank you, that's helpful. It's, it's just, the way it's framed, seems like a two-thirds, one-third reduction in the normal number of units, but it's actually over 50%. The calculation on the years of affordability is based on the lift, so they calculate the value of the lift, and, and then determine the number of units and the length of time. So there's actually a dollar figure that's associated with that calculating lift.
Thank you. Any other comments on the referral? Counselor Pelosi, now it's your turn. You go ahead, please.
Thank you, your worship. I realize, in having listened to colleagues tonight, that I've been living this application for a couple years, and working with the community, staff, and the developer, and that this was the first time it came before PEC. Just, this is the work I've been doing behind the scenes, and my concern is about getting it right. And I heard a lot of support from colleagues that they're excited for this transit project, recognizing it is a transformative project, and it's the first of its kind in absolute decades to be built in South London. So I'm fine with the referral back to staff, for transparency, that staff can comment, and if you want to hear it direct from them, that the changes in it around all-season plantings, and transparency of glass, and other features, were still what was discussed behind the scenes, absolutely no problem with that, for transparency, and making sure that hopefully there'd be a higher level of council support, as this is one of the first projects to come through in regards to the south leg of the BRT. So that's why I was happy to second Deputy Mayor Morgan's motion, was just if that conversation wanted to happen in full, and everyone had their opportunity to ask questions of staff.
Thanks very much. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you. I think where we do agree on is the importance of this development. This is the first one that Counselor Pelosi has said, of this size, along this important rapid transit-approved route. I think to see the success of that transit route, we need this type of development. And I believe once this development happens, it will encourage other developments to come along. It's always the first one to break through, to lead to further development. Once that happens, I think this transit route will be successful and serve as intended. The challenge here is that we've, we're up against a timeframe, like affordable housing will not be, that option will not, we will not have through provincial decree come September. Yes, we're, the developer and ourselves, the city, are a part on the actual number of units. There is mitigation, mitigating factors with the number of actual rooms, because there are more three-bedroom units being proposed here than we've seen in the past. Why I referred it is, we face a danger here of a couple things. One is an appeal, which will delay, or worse, a massive rejig by the developer on the type of development he wants to build here, which would move away from, I think, what we would all like to see here. I wasn't willing to risk that for that gap that we had in affordable units. So I supported that planning, a recommendation to refer back, to see if we get both parties a little closer, and maybe even meet somewhere to get this done. I didn't see that there was much support for referral earlier in the evening. I hear what councillors have saying about process, I understand it. I don't like getting involved in negotiations in public. This is a special circumstance. We want to see this thing built, but we want to see it built with the maximum number of affordable units, for sure. There's no question. I think what Deputy Mayor Morgan has proposed in referring this back to staff is will serve two purposes. One is to make sure we have the exact wording, and it will give us all pause to think about this, because we'll get it at the next, at next Planning Committee, and get it in before, get that council meeting in, before any changes are made to affordable housing. So I will support this referral, and I really hope we can find a way to get this project going.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to have a final word on this? It would appear at Counselor Hopkins' desk, please.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and I'm not going to be supporting the referral. I think it's quite obvious that we need to refer this back so staff can really do the work that we're telling them to do. And eventually, this will come back to Planning Committee, Committee. And eventually, we are going to be looking at staff's recommendation or what we're telling staff to do. And I am supportive of the staff's recommendation. I, it, to me, it just boils down to the affordable housing portion of it and the units that are available. It's that simple. We're, we're getting less and by quite a bit. And I'm just really thinking of the next parts of this coming to us. And we're going to be faced again at Planning, faced again, looking and having this discussion that we've had here at council. So I won't be referring or supporting the referral back because inevitably I will be supporting the staff recommendation. So thank you.
So noted. Any other final comments? Boy, from, from just having really tight, everyone has a thought again. Counselor Lewis, then Counselor Van Holes, please. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I would prefer to make a decision tonight, but I do hear the importance of making sure that the bylaw and the intent of the motion line up. I will therefore support the referral for that purpose. I think what we've heard is there is an impasse. Staff brought forward a recommendation that the applicant had no interest in. The applicant has brought forward an alternative that members of council have no interest in, and the planning staff won't support. Somewhere along the way, we're going to have to make a decision on this, and we're going to have to make it soon. You know, Counselor Hopkins said we're getting less, not more, in terms of affordable units. There's nothing at all preventing the developer from pulling this application completely and resubmiting sometime next year a smaller development with no affordable units that fits under the density of the London Plan. So I think that that's something we have to consider, too. The end result of this potentially could be zero units. So that's a consideration as councillors that we have to weigh in the balance of our thought process. I hope that that's not the case, but it could be. So I hope that when this comes back on August 22 to PEC, staff will provide us a technical overview of whether the motion lines up with, with the bylaw, and we'll make a decision as to whether we're going forward or not. I, you know, I have changed twice tonight from having moved a referral at Planning to not supporting that own, my own referral tonight, to now being willing to support a referral again. But I feel like we're going in circles and spinning our wheels here. And I don't feel like anybody is convincing anyone on either side. But at the end of the day, what I know and what we've heard from Mr. Barrett repeatedly over the course of this Planning Committee's term is that the decision ultimately lies with us. Staff provide their recommendation, and we support it, or we amend it, or, or we refuse it. But the decision ultimately, we're the only body, as Counselor Morgan has, Deputy Mayor Morgan has put it before, we're the only individuals in the corporation that have the authority to vary from policy. And I am willing to vary from policy to get results in terms of getting some affordable housing and some housing inventory in general, some purpose-built residential units, not just the affordable units, but all of the units in this development desperately needed inventory in this city. So I will support the time for the bylaw and the motion to be reviewed by the clerks and city staff and planning staff and have that come back to us. But it's, it's frustrating that here we are once again with, without meaning any insult to anybody but kicking the can down the road a few more weeks.
That, under Roberts' rules, does not consider a denigration. Kicking the can is okay. Counselor Van Holes, please.
Thank you, your worship. My comments about this, I'm okay with supporting the referral. I considered seconding Counselor Cassidy's motion, but was surprised that the other people who had spoken against what was on the floor didn't, didn't do so. So I waited to hear further. My, my initial thought is that the 1,272 units is, is far more important than the extra 28 affordable housing units or the extra about 10 bedrooms that we're attempting to go negotiate for. I would also say that in the, the grand scheme of things, affordable housing, as it exists, as a 20% discount on, on the average unit in London, may not be as, as big a factor for securing homes for everyone as, as, as we may, we may think. But I was at the meeting and I, I sat through the, the long meeting to hear the comments of the councillors and the, the public. And in, in this case, the, the two issues that seem to be on the, on the table at the meeting were the, the floor plate size, and we can see how the configurations might have been compromised if we were holding too closely to that amount, which might have been arbitrary. And the others was the, the other was the, the mix of the bedrooms. And I see that the developers had been quite willing to offer something different. And I see this is often the case, is that our, our developers are, are, are trying to, trying to please in terms of what the city is looking for, what the residents are looking for, and, and, and searching to find the, the best, the best compromise in terms of being able to build something affordably for them as well. So I see those changes. I, I would be okay with these things. And so having a go back just so that we can make sure that all the, the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted in terms of the bylaw is, is fine, fine for me.
Thank you.
So I'll, I'll be looking forward to see what happens at, at the next meeting. But I do hope that we will be able to go forward with what's a pretty aspirational development and based on the plan that we had for transit corridors. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hillier.
Thank you. And what I appreciate is the fact that we're trying to increase our stock of affordable units through all this. And I have quite a few points here, and I was going to make them tonight, but I think I'm going to wait because I'm on planning, and I have a feeling this will be referred. And I'm looking forward to the discussion there. Thank you.
So noted. Thank you very much. Does anyone who hasn't spoken yet would like to have an extra word since we're doing that tonight? With that, this is on the referral. Clerk, you still with us? We'll call the question.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 12 to 2.
Colleagues, I'm going to turn your, oh, I'm going to go back now to Counselor Hopkins. Anything else? This was planning environment.
That is my report.
Okay. Thanks very much. I know that feels painful from time to time. Colleagues, we now have the added reports. And for the 11th report of council in closed session reporting out, let me call on Counselor Hopkins, please.
The 11th report of the council in closed session, your council in closed session reports. One, awarding of the 2022 Queen Elizabeth scholarships, that on the recommendation of the city clerk, the following actions be taken in connection with the awarding of the 2022 Queen Elizabeth scholarships. A, in recognition of achieving the highest scholastic achievement in their graduating year, the following student be awarded the 2022 Queen Elizabeth scholarships in the amount shown. Richard Deng, London Central Secondary School, 99.17% average, 2,000. B, notwithstanding council policy 1.3, which provides for Queen Elizabeth scholarships in the amount of 2,000 each to be granted by the City of London in each school year for admission to any university to the two students with the highest scholastic achievement, the following four students be awarded the 2022 Queen Elizabeth scholarships in the amount shown. Paige Eboy Smith, AB Lucas Secondary School, 99% average, 2,000. Ballerina Ling, London Central Secondary School, 99%, 2,000. Nicholas Sglenix Saunders Secondary School, 99%, 2,000. And John Matty Regina Monday Catholic School, or Catholic College, 99%, 2,000. C, the city clerk be directed to bring forward to a future meeting of the Community and Protective Services Committee proposed amendments to, to the Queen Elizabeth scholarship policy that can provide for steps when the candidates for the highest scholastic achievement in a given year exceeds 2, as currently provided for in the policy. Two, lease agreement, former HDC office, 520 Wellington Street, Unit 7, 8, Centennial House, Municipal Housing Development, that on the recommendation of the deputy city manager finance supports with the concurrence of the director of Municipal Housing Development, and on the advice of the director Realty Services with respect to the lease agreement of commercial office space located at 520 Wellington Street, Unit 7, 8, Centennial House, the new lease agreement, the lease as appendix A between the city and Centennial House Limited, the landlord, for the lease of approximately 3,000 square feet of rental space located at 520 Wellington Street, Unit 7, 8, for a term of two years and six months for the city's municipal housing development, at a net rent of $9.75 per square foot in year one, $10 per square foot in year two, and $10.25 per square foot in the remaining six months in year three, with two further options to renew the two years be approved. Three, property acquisition, Wellington Gateway Project, 253-255 Wellington Road, Wellington Gateway Project, that on the recommendation of the deputy city manager finance supports with the concurrence of the director Construction and Infrastructure Services, on the advice of the director Realty Services, with respect to the property located at 253-255 Wellington Road, further described as lots 32 and 33, Plan 452, 4th, being all of PIN 08364-0022 LT, containing an area of approximately 9,213.9 square feet, for the purpose of future road improvements to accommodate the Wellington Gateway Project, the following actions be taken. A, the offer submitted by Danny Deep and Fatty Deep, the vendor, to sell the subject property to the city for the sum of 1, 145, be accepted, subject to the terms and conditions as set out in the agreement as appendix C. And B, the financing of this acquisition be approved as set out in the source of financing report heretofore as appendix A. Number four, property acquisition, 247 Wellington Road, Wellington Gateway Project, that on the recommendation of the deputy city manager finance supports with the concurrence of the director Construction and Infrastructure Services, on the advice of the director Realty Services, with respect to the property located at 247 Wellington Road, further described as part of lots 29 and 30, Plan 452, 4th, in the City of London, County of Middlesex, as in instrument number LC 116932, being all of PIN 08364-0019 LT, the property containing an area of approximately 4,725.35 square feet, as shown on the location map as appendix B, for the purpose of future road improvements to accommodate the Wellington Gateway Project, the following actions be taken. The offer submitted by Marislav Siches, the vendor, to sell the subject property to the city for the sum of 500,000, be accepted, subject to the terms and conditions as set out in the agreement, appendix C. And B, the financing of this acquisition be approved as set out in the source of financing report here to, as appendix A. And that is my report.
Well, thanks very much, Counselor. Do you have a secondary, as you've put that on the floor? Do you have a secondary, Counselor Hamu? Thank you very much. Any comments or discussions on the well-spoken words of Counselor Hopkins? I see none. So with that, Clerk, can we just, oh, we do have, Counselor Turner, go ahead, please.
Sorry, your worship, but just like to declare the cuneer interest with respect to the property acquisitions in Wellington, as I own property within 1,000 meters of those sites.
Yes, and we'll be mindful of that with bylaws as well, so you know when we get to there. But Clerk, a question for you, respecting the conflicts associated with Counselor Turner's comments, do we need to vote on these separately so he can, he can have his abstention on those?
All right, he can indicate his recusal or abstention on the.
I'm sorry, you'll have to speak a little louder.
He can indicate his vote, so he can indicate the abstention or recusal.
Well, if we do it separately, yes, that's, I guess, what I'm asking.
Yes, correct.
In the pieces that Counselor Hopkins has presented.
That's correct, yes.
All right. So how shall we separate those out, please? So that we just need to have one separation, so that we can ensure that Counselor Turner's conflict is acknowledged.
Very well, Dean. The matter three relates to Wellington Gateway Project, 253 to 255 Wellington Road.
Well, let's deal with that one first, if we can. Wellington, the Wellington Gateway, that's been moved by Counselor Hopkins, seconded by Counselor Hamu. This is your conflict as indicated, Counselor Turner. So if I can ask the Clerk to set that up accordingly, we'll On the Wellington Road Gateway component, colleagues.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 13 to 0 with one recuse.
Need to speak for you, Counselor Hopkins? You're comfortable with moving the balance of your report and Counselor Hamu seconding it as well? Counselor Hamu?
Seconding the balance of that report. Thank you very much. Any discussion on that? This is on the balance of the 11th report of council in closed session. With that, then
I vote yes. It's, my vote is not coming up. My apologies.
Thank you, Counselor. Closing the vote. Motion carries 14 to 0. Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
Thank you, Counsel Hopkins, for reading out the 11th Report of Council. I know it's a fairly sought-after item, and I was glad to ask you to proceed accordingly. Thank you. Colleagues, I have no deferred matters of note, no inquiries, nor emotions or motions of which I've been made aware. So with that, we are going to take us through the bylaws. And I need to ask, I'm going to be separating out added bills 333 and 334, because that deals with the Wellington Gateway, and I'm respecting Counselor Turner's potential conflict. And Counselor Helmer, can I ask you on bylaws 315 and 16, which relate to short-term, we'll pull those separately, too. I presume that's what you'd want. All right, thank you. Does anyone need to have or wish to have by virtue of conflict any of these bills dealt with separately? Counselor Turner, we got your back, what's up?
I get 318 pulled as well, please.
And 318 is for the benefit of all?
It is. The bylaw to amend the official plan related to parking standards review.
The parking standards by law. And Counsel, and Counselor Hopkins, please.
I was going to ask 318 to be pulled.
Well, then you've seconded it, so noted. Thank you very much. Any other colleagues? If not, here's what we're going to do, then. I'll be looking for a mover and secondary for introduction and first reading of Bills 311 through 331, excluding 315, 316, and 318. I'll be adding Bill 332, which, by the way, for the benefit of everyone, is the lease agreement between the City of London and Centennial House, just so you know. And that will be excluding the two gateway components. So with that, I'll look for a mover, please. Counsel Lehman, is there a secondary? Counsel Fife Miller, let's vote on that, please.
Counselor Cassidy?
Mr. Mayor, I'm having troubles. Can you just, so I tried to pull up the vote to see what I'm voting on, and I'm having problems with eScribe. It just flashes and then goes away.
So what can we do to help?
Can you please clarify what we're voting on right now?
Yes, thank you. We are, just so you know, we have pulled the Bill 318 relating to parking. We have pulled 315 and 16 relating to short-term accommodations. And we have pulled the two bills relating to the Wellington Gateway. We'll call those separately, and I will advise Council accordingly. So now, this is first introduction, first reading of the bills that I've mentioned. Is that helpful?
All bills except for 15, 16, 18, and the Wellington Gateway.
Perfect.
Okay, so yes, I vote yes.
Thank you very much.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
And now, colleagues, second reading for Bills 311, excuse me, through 331, excluding 315, 316, 318. And we will add Bill 332 to that as well. For that, I'll look for a mover, please. Counsel Hillier seconded by Counsel Hamu. Any discussion? Counsel Hopkins? Counsel Hopkins, or Cassidy, I'm sorry, you have a question?
I wanted to make a comment, but you went to Counsel Hopkins first, I thought.
No, I made that up. It's, you're on first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, for Bill 314, which is the Canada-wide Early Learning and Funding Agreement, how pleased I am that this bylaw is being passed, that we are going ahead with this agreement, and that the provincial government did sign on to the National Daycare Strategy. So I'm pleased and looking forward to all the good things that will come from this, and hopefully we'll be able to keep up and get the spots open that we need to get open.
Well, the nice thing is, since you've announced it during the bylaws component, I'm sure other people said nice things at the committee reference level. So thank you for that, any other discussion? Then let's call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
Thank you. And finally, for third reading enactment of Bills 311 through 331, exclusive of Bills 315, 316, and 318. And we will be including Bill 332. For that, I'll look for a mover, please. Moved by Counsel Helmer, seconded by Counsel Pelosi, thank you. Let's vote on that.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
Thank you all. I'm now going to turn your attention to the bylaws from accommodations. And we're talking about bylaws 315 and 316. And what I'll be looking for is a mover and secondary and introduction, first reading of those bills. Can I have a mover, Counsel Hopkins, seconded by Counsel Hillier? Thank you very much. Let's vote on that, shall we?
Closing the vote, motion carries 12 to 0 with two recues.
And now, I'll look for a mover and secondary, second reading for Bills 315 and 16. Counsel Lehman, thank you, seconded by Counsel Lewis, thank you. Any discussion? On second reading, we'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries 12 to 0 with two recues.
Thank you. Now for third reading enactment of Bills 315 and 316. I'll look for a mover and secondary, please. Moved by Counsel Hillier, seconded by Counsel Fife Miller. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, although, yes, my eScribe is being crazy again.
Thanks very much.
Closing the vote, motion carries 12 to 0 with two recues.
Sets of items to deal with. The next piece related to parking standards is Bill 318. I'm going to be looking for a mover and secondary for introduction, first reading, please. Moved by Counsel Lehman, seconded by Counsel Pelosi. Thank you very much. I'll call the vote.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel Cassidy votes yes.
Thank you.
Counsel Helmer?
I see Counsel Hillier. You have a question, Counsel Hillier?
Just letting technical staff know, I have three voting windows open on my screen right now that won't close, so I'm going to refresh.
You've got more voting power than I do, Counsel.
Counsel Helmer?
I have voted. I will try and vote again. It seems to be registering.
Thank you. Unfortunately, Counsel Helmer, it's not registering. If you wanted to indicate verbally, we can enter that.
This is Bill 318?
Correct, it's Bill 318.
Thank you.
Thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries 12 to 2.
So colleagues, of Bill 318, I'm going to require a mover and a secondary, please. Moved by Counsel Hamu, seconded by Counsel Helmer. Thank you very much. Any discussion? I see none, let's call the vote.
Counsel Van Holst? Closing the vote, motion carries 12 to 2.
And finally, colleagues, for third reading enactment of Bill 318, I will look for a mover, please. Moved by Counsel Hillier, seconded by... Look at people on the screen now, you know. Counselor Cassidy, thank you very much. Let's call the vote, please.
Closing the vote, motion carries 12 to 2.
Last set of bylaws relate to the Wellington Gateway that are, and that includes Bills 33 and 333, 334. So for those two bills, introduction and first reading, I'll require a mover and a secondary, please. Moved by Counsel Hopkins, seconded by Counsel Fife Miller. Thank you very much. Let's vote on that.
Closing the vote, motion carries...
Thanks very much. Now for second reading of Bills 333 and 334. Can I please have a... By Counsel Hamu, seconded by Counsel Lehman. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Clerk, you have discussion?
Your worship, just to be clear, this is the Wellington Road. That last vote was a Wellington Road matter.
The last one is, yes. Was there a challenge with the vote?
It was.
We pulled that specifically because of potential for conflict.
Sorry, your worship, I wasn't sure. I thought that, going by the numbers here, my apologies. I thought that was, that last vote was for the Airbnb.
It was not. No, we're past that by a couple. So if you like, you can buy discussion on this. You can claim, as you have in the past, your challenge. I think that would work, but I'll go to seek the Clerk's advice, because we do not want to put anybody into harm's way, Clerk.
Hi, your worship, it's only one vote. I would recommend a reconsideration. Read it out, single vote. I see Counsel Cassidy's hand is up.
So we'll need a motion for reconsideration. Counsel Hopkins, seconded by Deputy Mayor Morgan. Thanks very much. It will require two thirds, but you have my support. Those in favor, we will actually go on the screen, sorry.
Sorry, everybody.
I vote yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, so noted. Just a little patience, colleagues, we're getting there.
Counsel Lewis, Counsel Helmer, Counsel Cassidy, Counsel Hopkins, and your worship.
It hasn't come up yet on this screen. I can't speak for colleagues.
I'm in favor of reconsideration.
As am I, thank you.
Counsel Lewis also votes yea.
Counsel Hopkins votes yea.
Thank you. And Counsel Turner, it's not required to recuse on a vote for reconsideration?
Just crossing my t's, thanks.
Thank you. Votes closed. Carries 13 to 0 with one recuse.
All right, so colleagues, I'll be looking for a mover and secondary for introduction, first reading of Bills 333 and 334 for the benefit of all. That's the Wellington Gateway. So with that, I've got Counsel Turner and Counsel Hopkins. Thank you very much. Let's call the vote, please. Pardon me? No, I said, no, no. Counsel Fife Miller and Counsel Hopkins. If that's not what I said, I'm getting as curious as some of the votes that I have taken tonight.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0 with one recuse.
Thanks very much. And I'll be looking for a mover and secondary other than Counsel Turner for the second reading of Bills 333 and 334. Counsel Cassidy, Counsel Hillier, thank you very much. Any discussion? I see none. We'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0 with one recuse.
And finally, for third reading enactment of Bills 333 and 334, I'll require, please, moved by Counsel Lewis, seconded by Counsel Hamu. We'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0 with one recuse.
Thank you all. You've all shown tremendous patience tonight, and I'd like to say thank you. So colleagues, it looks like we do have a rea... We may have to have a reconsideration again. Counsel Turner, I'm not picking on you, but it looks like on 315 and 16, you recused and you had not declared a conflict. Those were the short-term accommodation bills? That's according to the Clerk, who knows everything. Pardon me?
Said it might be easier for me to declare the conflict.
It might be, or we can vote for reconsideration. I think that's what the advice the Clerk's giving us here. So... So, so colleagues, we'd be looking for a motion of reconsideration of those two bills associated with short-term accommodation, where Counsel Helmer has, has declared the conflict. So do I have a motion, Counsel Cassidy, seconded by Counsel Hillier? Let's vote on that, please. And then we're going to take us through the three readings of this.
Counsel Cassidy votes yes.
Thank you. Counsel, adjournment logged out, so he also votes yes while he logs back in.
Closing the vote. Motion carries fourteen to zero.
All right, thanks very much. So colleagues, I'm now going to turn your attention back to the two bills for which reconsideration has been given. That's bills three fifteen and sixteen relative to short-term accommodations. I'll look for a mover and a seconder, please. Counsel Pelosi, seconded by Counsel Hamu. Thank you very much. I'll call the vote.
Counsel Cassidy votes yes.
Thank you. I'll need your microphone, please. What was your question, Counsel Pelosi?
Sorry, your worship, I thought it was seconded by Counsel Hamu, not Counsel Fife Miller. This motion.
I'm starting all over again with new reason.
There's a motion on the floor. I believe the seconder was Counsel Hamu, not Counsel Fife Miller, as it states, if technicalities is technical.
Are you talking about the original motion on this?
The bylaw that's on the floor before us, on the screen, says Counsel Fife Miller. Threw you to the clerk. Is that the proper seconder? Or is it actually supposed to be Counsel Hamu, if it matters?
It is Counsel Hamu.
And that will be corrected. Thank you.
For seconders, which is why we always want to properly acknowledge them, I think, you see.
Closing the vote. Motion carries thirteen to zero with one recuse.
Thanks very much. Colleagues, for bills three fifteen and six, three sixteen relating to short-term accommodations, for second reading of this bill, look for a mover and a seconder. Counsel Hopkins. I'm sure we'll get that absolutely correct on the screen. Any discussion? Then we'll call the vote.
Closing the vote. Motion carries thirteen to zero with one recuse.
And finally, colleagues, for third reading enactment of bills three fifteen and three sixteen, a seconder, please. Moved by Counsel Lehman, seconded by Counsel Lewis. We'll call the vote.
Thank you. Closing the vote. Motion carries thirteen to zero with one recuse.
Colleagues, this has been a very long night. And again, you've been very tolerant. I appreciate that very much. My own direction, I felt like the gang couldn't shoot straight, but I think we got to the right place. So thank you all for your indulgence and time. I also get a chance to say thank you to staff. You know, what a week it's been, this past week. And I say that because of the committee meetings, including Committee of the Whole, and all the things that you've done. And I say thank you for that. To staff, sincerely appreciate it. You know, we always say this in our Committee of the Whole and our, and our SPBC and our council meetings. But you know, it's thoughtfully appreciated, the work that you do. I'd like to pay particular tribute to Deputy City Manager Kevin Dickens and his team. You've been dealing with a lot of significant issues this past week, today. All issues around our most vulnerable, around mental health issues, addictions, housing, all the things that matter in this community amongst so many others. So we thank you, and please extend that appreciation to your teams as well, all of you. So thank you for that. When you see Ms. Smith, ask her about the polar bear. Let's keep that going. We want to, we own a polar bear, but I can't say any more than that. She'll have to tell you. And with that, I'm going to look for a motion to adjourn. I see Counsel Fife Miller, seconded by, I see Counsel Hopkins. Now, can we do this by show of hands, clerk? He says it's okay. So screen's on. And since it's okay, those who want to adjourn.
And that motion carries.
Thanks very much. We will see you as we see you.